Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, July 7th, to order, which pre-ise all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Fire evacuation announcement in case there are two ways to exit the chambers. To my left through the council chamber doors, turn left and walk down one flight of stairs and out of the building, or right behind you out through these chamber doors. And please, if there is any incident, please walk away as far away from the building as you can. Thank you. Seeing tonight that our regular secretary will not be in attendance, Vice Chairman De Gray will be the secretary for tonight, so will you please call the roll?
Lou Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda De Gray. Here. John Petronella is absent. Francis Lima.
Here.
Karim Machmadar.
Here.
Did you like that? I said it right.
You're doing good.
Ken Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo is absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nick LaFakas.
Here.
Thank you. The records show there's nine in attendance. Also, since our regular Commissioner Petronella is not here, it will, and since alternate Vinnie Grillo is now not here tonight, Nick LaFakas, the other alternate, it's his turn, he will be sitting in as a full-time member of time with Commissioner D'Antonio filling in as needed. Entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the June 22nd regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to tell you that I did watch the meeting from last month, so, last month, and so I can vote.
You feel confident of voting on the minutes? Thank you. Is there, there is a motion to accept, is there any amendments that need to be made, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from the June 22nd meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record showed it was unanimous to accept the minutes from the June 22nd meeting. The last town attorney report we have is also from June 22nd. There's no need to really respond on that. There hasn't been an update. Now we'll move on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business that at this time is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. That also includes any pending legal activity. Is there anyone who would like to come in front of the commission to speak at this point? Is there anyone who would like to come in front of the commission and speak? For a final third time, anyone like to come in front of the commission to speak? Seeing none, public participation is closed. There's no bond releases tonight. I will entertain a motion to please move Old Business FLD 45 to be after continued public hearings.
So moved.
It's a motion made by Vice Chairman Higley to move Old Business FLD 45 to be after continued public hearings, is seconded by Vice Chairman De Gray. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of making an adjustment to our agenda?
Aye.
The record shows unanimous to move that item up on the agenda. Thank you. There's no presentations tonight. Now we're moving on to continued public hearings. PH 3063, we don't have to read it because basically we're reopening this public hearing. This is the 25 Hazard Avenue for Chick-fil-A. The applicant or representative, please come forward. More stuff.
Usually I don't let the applicants come in front, but I am going to let you tonight
because we are shorthanded with staff too, so please, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you will brief us on what's new? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, good, this is all the staff concerns.
Yeah.
Too bad it couldn't have made it into our packet.
That's been the problem. Thank you.
Are we all set?
I think so.
Okay.
The only other thing I just like to mention, if I can't say, I forgot to mention it, I will let Lori Wittens hear from staff, and also our assistant town planner, Matt Davis, I think is joining us remotely, just to let you know, I think he's.
Saw him on the screen.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make that note. Go ahead.
Yes, all right. Again, for the record, Amy Suchins, I'm an attorney at Hurwitz Sager &amp; Sosberg &amp; Knuf with offices in Milford. And with me tonight are our representatives from Bowler. What I just handed out to you, and I apologize for the late submission with the 4th of July holiday and pulling some of the information together, we were trying to finalize things this week. But what that is, much like last time, I just wanted to go through a couple of highlights as we will with our Bowler team with respect to comments in the most recent staff report and staff email that we had received on July 3rd, just to go through and explain some of those things. I think the most important thing I wanted to highlight at the beginning was there was a question about whether we understood the applications that we had in front of you, particularly with respect to the distinction between special permits and site plan applications. I can assure you, this is one of probably 10 special permit applications currently on my desk. I've probably done, over the course of my career, north of 200 of them, as has our Bowler team. Most of the applications I work on, in fact, are special permit applications. So I think when there's been a reference to what we've provided, and one of the things that we've attached is actually the original special permit approval for this restaurant from 2014. I think that's an instructive document. It's both the approval and the set of plans, because in analyzing what would be an appropriate submission for a special permit application with respect to this property, it obviously made sense to go back and look at those approvals and understand what the commission at the time had been looking at, what was submitted, and the kinds of information. So I also did provide in the letter that the, we do believe we meet all of the special permit criteria outlined in Section 920.2A of your zoning regulations. I have a summary of that. I think there are three criteria, and we certainly believe we meet all of them. The second item was about details of the retaining wall. As we left off last time, and Joey will go into with you, there were some questions. I do want to highlight for you that in the 2014 plan set, which I provided, Sheet DN1 has information about the retaining wall. It's actually less information for a larger wall than what we've provided to you as of today. Joey has some additional information we'll present tonight, but again, I think it's certainly relevant. He's also had some conversations with the town engineer since our last meeting to go through that. The third thing was that staff had asked that we confirm that our owner, the owner of the Paramount Commons Shopping Center, was aware of our application, certainly was at the beginning, and has, there's an email in there that confirms the owner is in fact familiar with and understands any obligations that would be imposed for the area outside the Chick-fil-A leased area with respect to landscaping or other modifications. And with that, with respect to the landscaping details, same thing. The landscaping plan that's included in the 2014 plan set is LL-1. That has the information. I think there's been some question about whether we've provided the adequate amount of materials and information. Leslie's going to go into, who's our landscape architect, here tonight to answer any of the other questions you may have. She was actually just out at the site looking what's there, so she can give you very updated information. But more importantly, the other thing that we had provided was both the letter that had been requested at the last hearing with respect to confirming the health of the trees that are out there, that we believed in the landscape architect's opinion, that there would be sufficient area for construction, maintenance, et cetera, with health of trees. Leslie can go into that. And also confirming that in two draft conditions, we had, when we submitted the most recent materials, we said we'd submit the draft conditions that outline what our responsibility would be to monitor those during maintenance and affirm for the planning staff that they continue to remain viable, and also with respect to bond for any landscaping that might be impacted by construction. And then the last thing was, there was also a question about the applicability of the criteria for the landscaping. It was at the end of the staff memo. Mr. Davis and I had a back and forth and were able to confirm that the language that he had quoted in his memo was actually not the appropriate quote. What we, and I submit, is the, the relevant standard is 9104C, which is the site plan standard with respect to landscaping. Talks about the general landscaping of the site being in character with that generally prevailing in the neighborhood, and that we maintain existing trees over 12 inches in diameter to the extent possible. So I think what you'll hear from Leslie, and as shown in our plans, we are going to make every effort to retain the landscaping that exists there, to maintain that uniformity. We believe there won't be any impact, and I do think that that's consistent with the site plan standards. The one other thing that I didn't put in the letter but did want to highlight, there was a question about two of the parking spaces, basically almost near the front door, being dedicated to employee parking. Obviously, given their proximity to the front door, we don't want to limit those to employee only. We do think, and Joey can answer any questions for you, we do think that they'll be functional, and people are very aware of their movements, so we don't want to restrict those to employees only. So other than that, I will turn it over to Joey to walk you through some of the conversations with the town engineer, and then to Leslie to go into the landscaping.
Thank you. And Joey, the portable one might work. I don't know if it's working tonight. Give it a try if it's easier for you.
Okay. Can you all hear me? Hear me now?
Well, we can hear you, and I just want to make sure that the TV can hear you, so that's why.
All right. All right. All right, so my name is Joey Fonseca. I'm with Bowler, and I'm just going to walk through really some of the bigger questions from the prior meeting, and this one was really relative to the wall design, the existing trees, and some of the landscaping that was being proposed. I'm going to sort of walk through some of the conversations that I've had with the town engineer, Mr. Nunes, and some of the conversations that I've had with Versalock as well. So I'm going to back up the slides a little bit here. So this is the area where the existing wall, we're going to tie into the existing wall. So this is alongside the expanded drive-through. Yep, as you can see here, this is where the additional lane is. You all are well aware of the proposal here, but just to highlight where the existing or the proposed wall limits are. So the existing wall ends a little bit further into the site. We're demoing a portion of that as this additional lane sort of sweeps out around the corner of the building. So we're going to be tying in here at the edge of this sort of green line here, or green shade, and then it's going to sort of basically follow in parallel with the drive-through lane. So we've reached out to three or four different wall vendors to understand, we couldn't get the original wall vendor for, we didn't do the original design for the Chick-fil-A, so we weren't sure who the vendor was. We reached out to Versalock, Unilock, and I forget what the other one was.
Tackle.
Yeah, Tackle Block. Versalock was, the company responded back saying, yep, that's one of our walls. We did that design. They pulled that archive file, and they gave us some insight into the existing wall design. So the existing wall that's along Hazard is a little bit taller. It's about four to five feet. They did mention that there is GeoGrid behind that wall, and while they couldn't provide an actual design for this extension or this extension of the wall, they did give us some feedback as far as what to look for and what to kind of design for onsite. I spoke with Mr. Nunes about this. He, you know, he agrees that this is more of like a chicken and egg. You know, we're not going to get a design until we have an approval. Versalock's not going to waste their time designing it until they know that this project's real, but he wants to make sure that A, we're following Versalock's standard detail, and that A, we're, you know, and B, we're protecting some of the existing vegetation that we've heard, you know, all along this application. So in my conversations with Versalock, some of the recommendations that we received were for guidance on how far back that GeoGrid could potentially be under this scenario, under this wall. They were recommending that any wall above three feet, basically there's a factor there of .7. So you take that overall wall height, multiply it by .7, that gives you your length of GeoGrid that's required. So in this section here in green, highlights the area that is about four feet, that is four feet high. So with that, again, that's a prelim calculation. That requires about 2.8 feet of GeoGrid behind the wall. Now, a foot of that grid is buried in the wall itself, which is 12 inches wide. So really, the grid extends back about 1.8 feet, so just under two feet. So this highlighted area here sort of represents kind of the limit of that. It's about two feet, and again, there's no trees within this vegeta, within this corner here that are going to impact any of the root structure. There's just some existing juniper shrubs that are here, and I think the intent is save as many shrubs, and we talked about this last time, as much as possible, you know, during construction. So, so north of that, so the magenta zone above that is where it goes from four feet to three feet. So again, anything below three feet doesn't require any soil reinforcement, above three feet does. So in that section of the magenta area, it requires just under two feet of GeoGrid, which again, a foot is buried, so it's less than a foot beyond that. So behind the building, behind the wall, the GeoGrid will extend approximately a foot, which again, that tree is about nine feet away from the back of the wall there, so, and Leslie can certainly get into, you know, her recommendations and what she's seen during her analysis of that. But I really just kind of wanted to highlight the extent of the grid that we've had with our conversation with Versalock, and again, they were the wall manufacturer, the wall vendor for the existing section as well. So this graphic was really just, the intention of that is just to kind of give the commission an idea of how much that GeoGrid is actually impacting, which really, you're talking about a couple of feet behind the wall, not, you know, not 10 feet, not beyond those existing trees that are there today. And this is the standard detail of this wall system. It's a Versalock square foot detail. This is what's installed onsite. And again, the detail shown here with soil reinforced, it's a similar detail that's on our, that was provided with our original set, and then above that's unreinforced. So again, this is three feet and under. It's a similar detail with excavating 12 inches behind it, but this one with soil reinforced indicates, you know, a GeoGrid. Not a length, but that'll come once a formal design is prepared and submitted for a building permit application. Another point that I spoke with the city engineer or Mr. Nunes about was drainage. The existing wall has weep holes along the front of it that convey water towards the drive-through. This will be the same approach. There'll just be a perp drain along the rear of the wall, and there'll be, there'll be some, probably two or three areas where, again, it'll just convey stormwater through the wall towards the drive-through. So, and it's similar, right now, that entire area just slopes down towards the drive-through. So, again, these details were, we'll update our plan set to incorporate these details, but they're essentially the same details that we had provided on our original set. And again, this is just a highlight of the details that were provided initially. That being said, I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to Leslie to kind of discuss.
I had two quick questions for you, if I may, before we go to the landscape architect. So, two questions, just so I clear up my own mind, is the wall isn't, I take it the dotted line is what I want to call the lease line?
The, so this dash line?
Yes.
That is what we're calling our limited work line.
Which is the lease line with Paramount, I would take it?
The lease line is, yes, I believe that's right. It's hard to read on this one, but, yeah, the lease line is.
So as far as you can tell in your work so far, you are not going to be exceeding as close to or over the lease line?
Correct.
The other question I have for you, is this my own curiosity, because I'm just going through, and I'm trying to envision when I go through the drive-through. The current window for where they pass out food, is that going to get relocated, or is that going to stay where it is?
That will stay.
So are you guys, having said that, I'm just cutting through here, because I know this drive-through pretty well, is, is the light pole on the right side of that lane going to be removed?
So there'll be one, the one pole's going to be relocated. There are lights underneath this canopy as well that are going to illuminate.
No, I was more concerned about the car merge.
Yep.
I'm there, and I'm saying, wait, this light pole's going to have to be moved, and there's going to be no merge.
Correct.
So you are moving that pole.
Correct, yeah. With the lighting plan that we had submitted with the plan set does show the relocated light.
That's why I couldn't quite find it. I just wanted to make sure and get it in the record.
Correct.
Because I'm sitting there physically, I'm going, this isn't going to work unless that pole's getting moved. All right, so that is getting relocated.
Correct.
Thank you, I'm all set. Thank you, everybody.
Leslie Fanger from Bowler, landscape architect. Let's see.
You just scroll down.
Scroll down.
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay. Oops, go back. So what I'd like to do is just start with the existing condition. We're showing the red circles of the existing trees that are in question as to whether or not they'll be impacted by the expansion of the drive-through lane. And you can see, I think this is the lease line here, and as Joey mentioned, we do not anticipate going beyond the lease line with construction activity, which clearly shows kind of, you know, a little bit of a separation from the tree canopy to the lease line. This is a recent picture, probably early week ago? Yep. These are roses, and you can see in the distance, this is the first tree in the line here, so that's this tree right here. If you've been there lately, you can see that the tree is in decline. It's been there, these trees, the ornamental trees, do have a lifespan, and it's not quite as long as an oak or a maple or so forth. But it's still a viable tree. The other two are in pretty good condition. So the one that would be closest to any activity would be the one that's the first one, which is this one here. Also shown are some of the existing shrubs that will be removed as a result of this drive-through expansion, and they are junipers and some of the roses, and a couple of smaller trees that were planted more recently. And then sort of across the drive, the exit lane of the Boulevard entrance, in the center are ornamental grasses, specifically Carl Forester Feather Reed grass, and you see it all over the place right now. It's very pretty, kind of beach grass sort of look. So the proposed condition, we feel, does keep in line with the character of the neighborhood. And so we are proposing similar grasses that were shown in the Boulevard, red knockout roses, and ground-covered junipers. This group of plants is down below the wall. I'll move to the next one. Above the wall, we felt it was a little barren. Right now, there's really, there's no color, it's just the trees. So the built condition will add all of these different perennials, black-eyed susan, New England aster, day lilies, a couple of different varieties, and the feather reed grass. So we're pulling in color as part of this effort and kind of sprucing up the entrance while maintaining those existing mature trees. I think that's all. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Matt, is there anything you'd like to add? I think you're still on remotely. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes we can. We can see you too. Thank you.
I live out in rural Connecticut, so sometimes the connection is not the best.
You're doing fine now.
Okay, good. This is the level of detail and the type of presentation that I had hoped to receive weeks ago, and it took a little bit of effort to get here finally, but I think we're finally here, and I think that's beneficial for everyone. Staff hasn't had the opportunity to review the news and middles that you received tonight. So obviously, we want to have the opportunity to do that. I haven't had a opportunity either to circle back with Mr. Nunes, to confirm with him what his opinion is. So there's a little bit of cleanup that we need to do, but I think we're finally at the point where we can hopefully wrap this up on the 27th. Just a couple of quick points. I did want to distinguish between the 2014 approval and this plan. I think we've been over this before. The difference between that approval and this proposal is really the proximity of the work to the property line and to that access drive. So the need for the additional detail, the need for the attention to the retaining wall and the landscaping is really based on the specifics of this particular application. So while there may be some parts of the 2014 application that were informative, I think, you know, the focus area is that area on the east side, which really wasn't necessarily an issue in the 2014 proposal. We typically do not require this level of detail at a site plan stage for things like retaining walls, and we don't get into extended conversations about tiebacks and the depths of the tiebacks, and where the tiebacks are going to be located, and trenches for utilities that are in the slope, and et cetera, et cetera, and drainage and the like. So this one, I think, did require that. I think we do have the information now that we need to have, and we'll leave it at that for now. The flood application, I understand, it has been basically approved by engineering, so that's good, that's not an issue. I don't think that was ever really an issue. The only thing I think I may want to get some guidance on from the members is in terms of the landscaping plan, staff doesn't have any particular druthers one way or another. You have an existing condition, and you have a proposed condition. We've all agreed about the bonds and the conditions in the approval relative to the existing trees and survivability, so that's good. So I think we've kind of checked that box. But the plan itself, if you think it's sufficient, if you think it complies with the requirements and the findings that you have to make, then that's fine. I just wanted you to have the details so you understood what you were being asked to approve. So now I think you have those details, so you can evaluate those for yourself and come up with your own conclusions. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, appreciate that, Matt. Thank you very much. Before I open up for commissioners for questions, I just want to get through this one thing. I don't think anyone's, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak for or against this application? For a third time, anyone? Seeing none, that part is done. Now we'll open it back up. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Majmadar.
I have just one question. It's not a question, more like a comment. The retaining wall is no more than three or four feet high at its max for a short stretch, and you may have GeoGrid. Now, the GeoGrid would be below the retaining wall top of the wall by about, let's say, two feet. Would GeoGrid help when you're planting either a low shrubbery type plant or a larger plant? Would it help or not help with a root system making the soil more consolidated, which is basically the function of the retaining wall?
With the proposed plants, they're mostly perennial, and their root system is fairly small compared to a tree or a shrub. So I don't think there'd be any impact, positive or negative, you know, with the GeoGrid. It's an open grid. It almost looks like snow fence, if you're familiar with, you know, these are like tiebacks, but it's a plastic material that has strength to it in a lateral position that helps stabilize the wall as it gets a little taller. So because it has an open pattern, roots can kind of find their way through there, no matter the size of the shrub, or even trees, for that matter.
Yeah, my understanding was it would help actually holding the soil back and therefore helping the retaining wall. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner D'Antonio.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, and I had asked last time about the relocated bike parking, and it was addressed in one of the responses. I looked for it in, it was mentioned in Sheet C 2.0 and 2.1, which was just the zoomed-in version. I didn't see any indication of it. I remember it was kind of pointed out on screen, but it's like, seems like it would be in like the landscaped area. I was hoping you could address that.
Sure. So the, this is existing space here, right at the exit location, is currently striped. It's striped off, there's a bike rack located in there. So as part of this application was, we're losing one space here with the widening of the drive-through entrance. We've converted that to a standard space to sort of match in the opposite side, and we moved the bike rack to the rear of the building. And that space was, I think it was eight and a half feet wide, so there, it just varied when they striped that lot, but we were able to re-stripe those spaces to gain nine feet across that building frontage to gain that additional space back. And to make up for that additional impervious coverage, this island here was also striped And to make up for that additional impervious coverage, this island here was also striped, and it's now a landscaped island to make up for that additional impervious coverage.
But the parking, the bike parking itself, though?
Is now at the rear, this rear, I'm indicating here. It's shown on the plan as well. It's on the, this rear corner of the building.
Actually, we probably consider it at the front.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sure. If you don't mind, how is it indicated in the plan? Because I see on the latest plan that we have, I see a 36 there, which is just referring to landscaped area. And I see an 11, which is a typical concrete sidewalk.
This is a zoomed-in version of it. You can see here where the darker lines indicating the restriping of those spaces. And so it's, if I could, actually, you know what? Let me, let me just flip over to the survey to show you what exists there today.
I think, I think actually, so I do see additional detail in this plan that I'm not looking at on the screen, so I think you got it covered.
And then the bike, the bike rack is located in this rear corner.
Yeah, that, I think I have the previous copy before that was added. Okay, but that looks good.
Yeah, this was the latest supplemental that we had a few weeks back.
Great. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Laimo.
Thank you. So I'm just a little bit confused. We're talking about the landscaping and the different shrubs and trees. And just to go back and maybe staff or attorney can answer this. So the application was a special use permit. And that I guess we signed, you signed back in March. Amy? Yeah. Now I'm looking at this letter from Matt, talking, telling you that it's a special use permit, not a special use permit application. And he just said something about it not being a special use.
It is a special use permit.
Right.
This is not a site plan.
But didn't he just say something about landscaping and site plan?
We have, we have...
I'm a little confused. That never even came up till tonight, because I'm reading Matt's letter. He kind of like, eh, but I'm confused.
Because it's a special use permit, we have the ability to reject or ask them to enhance the landscaping plan if so desired. That was a question I was going to ask the commissioner coming up. Because it's a special use permit.
Not a site plan.
It's not a site plan. This is not a site plan.
The canopy, the front canopy is very clearly under your regulations, a specific filed out under 510 special use permit. The 2014 approval and the way your regs read, given that it's a restaurant with a drive-through, also a special use permit. So we've applied for a special use permit. Think the question comes in is that there was, how we read Mr. Davis's comments was that we somehow didn't understand and were not meeting the requirements for a special use permit. And I would respectfully disagree, because I think we have, and based on what was shown. And in fact, the landscaping plan from 2014 has similar limits of disturbance and talks at, you know, looks at all that because they were converting parking. So I think ultimately, the issue is, is that the landscaping provisions in your regulations are site plan consideration criteria. They're not listed under the special use permit.
That's what I'm seeing.
And that's, that's my disagreement.
So how are we making such an issue over the landscape?
I agree with you. Your staff disagrees with me.
So does the chairman for that matter.
Can I clarify?
Yes, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, it's really simple. I'll put it in lay terms.
Yep, please.
The ankle's connected to the knee bone's connected to the thigh bone. Okay? Does that make any sense to anyone? The reason why we're talking about landscaping in terms of the special permit criteria is because the impacts on the landscaping are directly related to the scope of work associated with the additional canopy, the additional drive line. So, well, the client's attorney and I can have a little bit of a disagreement on this. I think it's very clearly connected. Now, also understand that every special permit application for our regulations requires a site plan associated with it. That's just the way that your regulations are. Some towns don't do that. Some towns consider them separate. In Enfield, we kind of join them at the hip, so to speak. But I hope that clarifies the relationship of landscaping to the special permit findings and criteria, as opposed to just the simple section cited in the site plan requirements for landscaping.
Thank you, Matt. So let me, let me ask this question if I can.
Oof.
Does, at this point, does everyone find, because Matt brought up a good point, I just want to make sure before we go forward, does everyone, at least up to this point, based on what we've heard tonight and past plans, that the landscaping plan that they've given us is sufficient and we're, and we're comfortable with that? Because Matt did ask that question.
I'm good with it, not that I could see this as a special use permit, and I didn't even need to do it.
Okay. All right, so we're all pretty good?
Yeah.
All right, so at least, I think, Matt, from that standpoint, and applicant, I think the planning's only commission, I'm not going to take a vote. I saw consensus here that we are, you know, feel the landscaping plan is sufficient.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. In Matt's presentation, he said this will be ready for the 27th, like the next meeting. Is there some conditions of approval we could add so these people can just get on with this thing?
And that's what Matt, again, because of the varying, I want to say, maybe disagreement or misunderstandings a little bit about what might have been required for us for a special use permit here, professional disagreements, I might say, or opinions. Matt and staff do not have the conditions and ready for us tonight to vote on this tonight. So we will have to, we have two choices. One, we can, if we feel pretty comfortable and we feel that there's no public input anymore in what Matt is going to now develop with the applicant for this, we can close the public hearing and then table the rest and then act on this at the next meeting. Or we can keep the public hearing open if we so desire. We do have one more meeting, we can. That was another question I was going to ask you, whether you felt confident now that we can close the public hearing, whether the applicant was comfortable with that also, that Matt now can develop the conditions for us to approve or not approve next meeting. I'm not going to make presumptions that's going to...
So my answer is no, we can't do it tonight?
We can't do it tonight.
So, so we heard from staff last meeting that there's some stress on the office?
Yes, there is.
Because of budget cuts? Is that why the conditions aren't ready tonight?
Well, I think part of it was because of the professional disagreement about requirements and some things that came in a little late. I don't want to say late. That's maybe unfair of me either, but a little late in time, so, go ahead, Matt. I shouldn't be speaking for you. I apologize.
It's really, it has nothing to do with disagreements about applications and standards in the regulations. It's extremely simple. We did not receive, and I think counsel for the applicant alluded to this before, because of the holiday and for other reasons, we did not receive information until June 30th. We reviewed that on, I think it was 7/3. Holiday 7/4, people are away, they're on vacation, so packets go out the end of that week, memos are written for the packet, and then we received additional information tonight. So the practical reality is that the reason you don't have conditions and a draft motion written for this evening is because staff did not have the information, all of the information necessary and requested to be able to review that information and to write a draft motion for you. It's as simple as that.
Matt, people have to understand that our packets are put together on Friday mornings. If things come in on Thursday afternoons, they're most likely aren't going to make our packets, especially if they need review from engineering staff. So we, stuff came in last Thursday, and there's been a few things with this application where things came in on Thursdays. They're not going to make our packet. Unless it's a simple memo, anything that needs to be reviewed by staff is not going to happen. And I think that's the point. And I'm not just saying that for you guys, I'm saying for anyone who's filing an application.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make something abundantly clear. The landscaping plan that you've, that we talked about tonight has not changed since our initial submission in March. We have made no changes, which is frankly why there was disagreement, because it was our understanding that Mr. Davis was unhappy with how things were presented on the plan. That was it. We offered to have calls. We offered to have meetings, and we're told that we couldn't be accommodated because, and we certainly understand, you're not the only commission that is very busy, that has limited staff. But I do want to make it really clear that the information has been available since March. There was no new landscaping information that was provided.
Okay, well, let's just, we're not going to, I'm not going to keep doing this. Thank you for...
I understand, but I think it's important for...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have to respond to that. I'm sorry. We need to put this to bed, okay? We did not have the information that we needed to be able to evaluate the landscape plan that was proposed based on the proximity of the retaining wall and the concerns that we had with respect to the potential damage that would be done to the existing trees that they were proposing would remain. So while maybe the plan didn't change since March, that may be true, but we weren't able to properly evaluate that plan in the context of the larger scope. We now have been able to do that. We have the landscape architect's professional opinion. We have more detail about the tiebacks on the retaining wall, more specificity about the retaining wall and its construction. So we are now finally where I hoped we would have been weeks and weeks ago, when we could have evaluated that information and made certain conclusions or suggestions or draft motions. Now we're there. We'll review the information that was submitted tonight. We'll come back on the 27th, and I think we'll have an opportunity to wrap this up.
I agree. And I, the chairman, I want us to go forward, so let's move forward. Yes, Matt? I totally agree with you. Thank you. So having said that, does anyone feel the need to keep, actually keep the public hearing open? Laura, do you recommend we keep the public hearing open, or you think, or Matt, do you think we should close that? And then we can just move on with your, with the recommended...
I'm perfectly fine with closing the public hearing. I think we have sufficient information now to make a decision. We'll review. I don't see anything new coming out of our review of the information that we've received this evening. And I think we're, you're comfortable with the landscape plan. You understand the impacts and the scope of work that they have. And so I don't think there's any reason to keep the hearing open. I think we can wrap it up on the 27th.
And based on our conversations with the town engineer, we believe we've answered all of these questions, which would have been the only thing that I think we need to keep. So we are fine with closing the hearing.
That's kind of what we were waiting for too, about the wall, so...
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I mean, we finally did get other staff comments, and that was unfortunately another issue, is, you know, timing of vacations and illnesses and things, so...
So I would propose moving forward with this, that we make a motion to close the public hearing, and then we're going to table this item for the next meeting so that Matt and staff can write up the conditions. And then we'll break that off the table next meeting, and we'll have a vote and finish this application up. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Mm-hmm. If anybody wants to speak again?
I already did. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray to close the public hearing. All those in favor of close?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Yes, please.
Please, go ahead. Discussion on a motion?
No other information can come in now, so everybody's...
That's correct.
And I know the, you're good?
We're good.
Okay.
Yep. She gave me the nod.
Well, because there's been a lot of professional disagreements, we're calling them.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But the record showed it was unanimous to close the public hearing. Now I will entertain a motion to table PH 3063.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray to table PH 3063. Discussion on a motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record show 3063 is tabled. You guys can stay right there. The application, PH 3071, top knot, will be, remain on the table. Actually, I'm going to entertain a motion to table that, because that was...
Continue.
Let's continue. But they're not coming, so we're going to leave it on the table, because they're coming in next meeting.
Right.
They're not here tonight. We don't need to have a motion.
Correct.
Staying on the table. Now we're moving on to FLD 45. That's why I said you guys didn't have to get up. So moving on to FLD 45, that's again, that is old business. I don't think, entertain a motion to remove FLD 45 off the table, please?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray to remove FLD 45 off the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But the record showed that, that's, FLD 45's off the table. I don't think we need to reread that, since we already did once. This is the flood review access for 25 Hazard Avenue, is the applicant or their representative here.
We are.
Please identify yourself for the record again. I'm sorry.
Do you want to contact with Bowler?
Any comments you want to make on this? And we went through this about a month ago, but it's a quick, quick, two-minute thing?
Sure, yes. Similar to what was discussed at that last hearing, all of the work is above the flood elevation. The, I think it's the 114 contour sort of crosses the exit location of the drive-through lane. All of our work is higher than that elevation. We're not doing any filling or any cutting within that flood. But there's no change to the flood storage for that.
Excuse me, thank you. Does staff have any questions or comments on this one? I don't know. Matt, nothing?
I don't, Matt?
Matt, any comments or anything you want to add to this one at all, or...
No, my understanding is that Georgie, my fellow associate, I reviewed this, the town engineer reviewed it, and I had thought that she had done a memo recommending approval.
She did.
Yeah, she did.
Okay. So, no, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
We have no issues.
Staff have any, commissioners have any questions on this, or any concerns they want to bring up?
Nope.
Secretary would like to make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve FLD 45 with the 23 conditions, application for development permit for regulated activities proposed within the special flood hazard area related to PH 3063, located at 25 Hazard Avenue, Chick-fil-A Inc., applicant Paramount Commons of Enfield LLC, owner, map 45, Lot 8, BR zone, per the reference plans and application materials received dated March 13, 2023, and with the 23 conditions.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Secretary. This motion was made by the secretary, Lynda DeGray, for approves. Their second was made by Commissioner Lefakis. Any discussion? Seeing none, now just, just for the record, this is just a small little parcel of the land in the northeast corner, what, maybe 20 yards at the most, 20, 30 yards, pretty insignificant. So again, thank you very much. There's a motion made by Secretary DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Lefakis. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call whenever you're ready.
Lou Fiore?
Four.
Lynda DeGray, four. Virginia Higley?
Four.
Frank Alamo?
Four.
Karam Majmadar?
Four.
Ken Holinsky?
Four.
And Nick Lefakis?
Four.
Thank you. The record shows unanimous approval for FLD 45. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night. Now we're moving on to new public hearings. Get myself where I am here. When the secretary is ready, we need to open up hearing PH 3069.
Excuse me, Laurie. Was this public hearing 3069, was that already in the, from the last meeting, in the paper?
It was in the paper from the last meeting, but we did not hear it.
Okay, so it's already been read?
No, we tabled it. We didn't read it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was never opened.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting, July 13, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall Council, Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, concerning public hearing 3069, 9 Manning Road, application to allow a commercial vehicle in an R-33 zone, Christopher, and I'm going to destroy this name.
Lataki.
Lataki, applicant owner, map 34, Lot 8, R-33 zone.
Thank you. Thank you, is the applicant or representative here? Is the applicant or the representative here?
Chairman?
Yes.
I can, I can give you just time to status report quickly. I received a communication from Mr. Lataki, I was out a couple of days early in the week on a medical matter, and, so I came in today and went through my emails to catch up, and there was one from Mr. Lataki indicating that he was withdrawing this application. Apparently he has removed the vehicle from the property that was the subject of the application, I need to verify that with the zoning enforcement officer, but as far as we're concerned, Mr. Lataki is withdrawing the application, and, so I just wanted to note that. So he wasn't going to appear this evening, he didn't want us to go forward with the proceeding, I told him that we really can't take it off of the agenda, so, in these matters, I would say since the hearing is open, just to note the withdrawal and to close the public hearing, I think that would be sufficient unless Laurie has some other concerns or suggestions.
I concur with you, Mr. Davis.
So your recommendation is we close the public hearing, and then just, don't vote, don't vote of denial, just close the public hearing, note that the applicant has indicated to us that he's withdrawing.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray, close this public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of closing the public hearing? The record show is unanimous to close this public hearing, and also for the record, I'm noting that the applicant has conversed with staff, and they've indicated that they are withdrawing this application, so we'll clause this as a done deal. Moving on to PH 3070ZA 140, 148 Hazard Avenue?
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, July 13, 2023, at 7 o'clock in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, concerning public hearing 3070ZA 40, 140 to 148 Hazard Avenue, application to amend section 5.50.1 regarding driveway in the BP zone, Trinity Health of New England, Johnson Memorial Hospital applicant.
Thank you, is the applicant and the representative here?
Yes, good, good, good evening, Tony Armel, Trinity Health of New England, representing Johnson Memorial Hospital and affiliates.
Thank you.
JR3, JR Russo and Associates here filling in for Mr. Steele this evening.
Well, there you go, thank you, glad to have you aboard. Brief overview of what you're requesting us to do at this point.
Yeah, so we presented here previously, when we went for the construction application, we were, we're looking for a second curb cut for service entrance only onto the campus, given the expansion of services on the campus, we would like to just dole out the traffic. One of our, our top models in, in healthcare is to keep the, the business in the back of the house, and, and our, you know, our patients in the front of the house, so this would just give us an opportunity to do that on the traffic stance to, so when, you know, our ultimate vision is when you enter our campus, you know, most people are looking for their doctor, they're reading the directories, they're looking at all the action that's going on in the campus, you come in slow, we don't want a pile of delivery vehicles behind you, so giving them a separate entrance to enter into the campus, go right to their delivery zone would just make things more smooth, in a better way for patient experience, and, and that's, that's our only goal, is to deliver good patient experience.
Thank you, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, for the record, JR3, JR Russo and Associates, my partner Dana, I think, submitted a, a letter with the application that basically explains a little bit about what the application is about, and your regulations currently in the BP zone on Hazard Avenue, which is where Trinity is located, there are numerous properties within that area on both sides of Hazard Avenue, and currently what the regulation says, and let me quote the proper section here for you, just give me a minute, we're looking at section 5.50.1.A, which essentially says that each one of the properties in the BP zone is only allowed one curb cut, and I know you're all familiar with it, I think you probably were all sitting here when Trinity came in with the initial application, you saw what they were trying to do, and it was decided at the time that, why don't we wait, not address this at the moment, we did propose a construction entrance, which is there, and was permitted by DOT, so, I think what Dana has done, between Dana and I think probably Matt and your staff were involved as well, is put together some additional criteria under that section of the regulation, which would allow you to consider a second curb cut under certain situations, and if you read through it, and I'm sure you all have, or I could read it if you like, Dana has added, and your staff has added, some approval criteria that gets fairly specific when we start looking at these different BP parcels, and, and I think the one that's probably most important, at least in, in my eyes, is the fact that it requires 500 feet of frontage in that zone to even consider or be eligible for you to consider a second curb cut, and many of the parcels in the zone do not have 500 feet of frontage, in fact, I took a quick look at it today, and I'm gonna pass these out, because you probably would ask this question. Matt, I'm sorry, I didn't email one of these to you, but I'm sure you're probably familiar with it enough that.
And again, just for the record, usually I don't allow applicants to pass things out to us, but we are shorthanded with staff, so I'm allowing it tonight, so thank you. I don't want people to get used to it, it's not gonna have poor Laurie get up and down all night.
Oh, it's okay. We're stuck. Thank you.
And Matt, unfortunately you can't see this, what he's handing out, correct?
That's okay.
Okay.
So, the plan that you have in front of you essentially is, in the dark line, is it an outline of the BP zone that's located on Hazard Avenue, we're looking north, and Johnson Trinity is located on the south side, it's the one that says 580 feet of frontage, and we back up to Middle Road. If you take a look at what I've got here, I looked at your GIS, and I did some scaling, and, other than Trinity, there are one, two, three, four other properties that could potentially apply, coming in with some type of a development plan, for more than one curb cut, or a second curb cut. What I didn't show you on here is, there are many other parcels that don't have the 500 feet of frontage, and wouldn't be eligible under this regulation, and there are some of these parcels that are severely impacted by wetlands, that even though they may have 500 feet or in excess of 500 feet of frontage, probably would be lucky to get one curb cut, because they're essentially cut off from, from the roadway by wetlands. So I think, in terms of looking at what's proposed in this new regulation, the 500-foot continuous linear feet of frontage on Hazard is, is somewhat limited as to what properties could, could apply here. As Tony has explained to you, this is important to Trinity in order to make the traffic flow work properly, it allows vehicles to come in without getting mixed in with the patients and the employees, the doctors and so forth that work there, they can come in, they can unload, and find their way back out with the least amount of interaction with the patients and, and the, the traffic from the folks who are working at this particular facility. You also have a letter in your packet from Scott Hesketh, who was our traffic engineer, who was involved in this, he's indicating here in his, in his letter that he feels this is a, a good thing for this particular location and this use, he tells you that in his professional opinion, the right turn only entrance, service only driveway, as previously proposed, would not create a substantial hazard to the traveling public, and as I know, you all know, you're pretty familiar with it, this would be a right turn in and not an exit, right turn in only from the eastbound lane, in this situation, for a property that might be located on the north side, there's only one, it would be a right turn in only, again, if that property were ever developed, currently that's all in agriculture, and is located right behind the plaza where the tractor supply is located. So this is obviously a change to your regulation that would apply to numerous properties, it's not site-specific, but we feel it's something that's needed for our site to operate properly, and we think, based on the regulation and the modifications to the regulation, that we've given you probably a comfort lever that you may need to evaluate each one of these sites that could potentially come in for an application such as this. If this were to be approved, certainly it would only give an applicant the right to come in before you with a permit, special permit application for you to review it, on a case-by-case basis, so even if you were to approve this tonight, Trinity could come back in and you could say, well, yeah, we think it's a good idea for some properties, but not for yours, and you could still deny it, so this isn't like we're gonna walk out with the key to the city, we understand that, but we do feel that it's important for this site, and, and hopefully that you can consider it for us this evening. Now I know, you, you've got a memo, I think, that Matt put together that I saw, you've got a letter from Scott Hesketh.
We don't have, we don't have the letter from Scott.
No.
Not that we need that tonight, because I'll be quite frank to you, I'd be surprised if we do anything with this tonight, but if you could please provide that to staff, so we have it for our next packet?
And Matt was not in today, and this came in late, there were a couple of comments on it, and Scott revised it this afternoon, I shouted out to Matt.
Okay.
We have, I was, I was there when it came in, and I was there when it came in, and I think there's 10 copies in the file.
So what I'll do is, I'll just submit this tonight for the record.
Okay, that'd be fine.
I'll give it to Laurie, so you have it.
It's only two pages.
Oh, we do have it, okay. So, thank you, Matt.
It's okay.
Laurie found it.
Thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome, man.
Thanks, Laurie. Because as you're talking, we're all looking through our packet, we're going, what the heck is talking about? Yeah, yeah, but thank you, Matt.
So with that said, I'm gonna be honest, probably Matt and my partner Dana Steele are much more familiar with this than I am, I wasn't too involved, but I did go through it today, and I read it, Tony obviously is very familiar with it, and I'm very familiar with the original design, as I was involved early on with Trinity, when we were going through the design process, and this was all put together from a functional standpoint, as I call it, the business end of the building, or the back of the building, for this to be able to function with, again, service vehicles and deliveries coming in, and not interacting with any of the patients and, and employees as they're coming into the site through the main entrance, so we feel it's a, a good proposal for this development, and potentially for others located within the BP zone, and hopefully you'll give it, give it your consideration and a positive vote. So with that said, if anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer them for you. Matt, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Um, I'm having difficulty picking up your audio, but I think you asked if I had any.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just in the interest of full disclosure, I want everyone to be clear that the commission probably recalls that when they submitted their initial application, that was withdrawn, that application was put together at the commission's direction, kind of collaboratively with Dana and, and with myself, so I did play an active role in that first application, in offering a lot of suggestions about the language that was in there, and a lot of that was carried forward into this second application, so I just wanted to make that clear, there was no questions about how this language had come about, we did work with them on the first application, and much of that language is included in this, in this second application, and there have been enhancements made, mostly on Dana's side, to add additional conditions and criteria and things like.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Holinski?
Yes, um, let me turn my microphone on, there you go. How much service traffic do you actually anticipate during any given weekday, or?
So, currently, anywhere between 10 and 20 deliveries a day, but, you know, we're expanding the campus for a volume increase, so, on the surgical side alone, with our couriers delivering specialty instruments for specific cases, I could foresee us doubling that.
So are these typically larger vehicles, smaller vehicles?
No.
And-type vehicles?
There's, there's no loading dock here, so it would never be a large truck, delivery vans, SUV-type vehicles mostly.
Okay.
So I'm assuming, just to, I guess, educate myself a little bit, so we're talking about FedEx trucks, UPS, maybe a?
Amazon.
Yeah, Amazon, maybe occasionally a box truck for larger items, you know, paper goods and those types of things.
Furniture or something.
Almost, yeah.
Furniture.
And even most of our, like, suppliers are using FedEx or UPS, so those are the most frequent vehicles.
And I think the question probably is where you were heading, is, are there tractor-trailers? And the answer probably is, is not, however, there is certainly the trash pickup that will come, and it will use this, as this is the service area, the MRI, mobile MRI will go away, obviously, once this is all there.
Yeah.
That is a tractor-trailer unit that you've probably seen over there, that we, quite frankly, had some difficulty trying to figure out how to get that in and out of there, because it's fairly large, doesn't navigate that well, that'll go away once this is all in place and up and functional, so that's a, that's a big plus, but, so it's mostly the smaller type delivery vehicles that would come in and out.
And that's part of the reason why we felt comfortable coming forward with, the amendment part of, of this project is, you know, with the construction entrance being approved in, in use every day, we're seeing far more traffic than we will on a regular business basis, far more tractor-trailer truck deliveries, and, I'm there six days a week, I haven't seen any interruptions in traffic, we haven't had any, received any complaints from the public, I, I spend a particular eye, because, you know, this is a part of the project that's particularly sensitive to me, I, I really would like to see the campus work the way as it was designed, so we're, we're particular about the way that we're impacting that traffic on 190, I travel it five or six times a day, I don't like the traffic on 190 either, so I don't want to make it any worse, so I, I think what we're using it for as construction entrance is probably exceeding the volume of what we'll see on a regular operation basis.
So, you're trying to take advantage of, I believe, the, the service entrance, so you can kind of, the vehicles come in, and then kind of make a U around the building, and then come back out through the, the traffic light?
Correct, so, the, the majority of people that are moving slow and reading signage are on their way into a visit, and then speeding their way away from a visit, so, the traffic certainly moves a lot smoother on the way out, so we're not worried about all these service vehicles gunking up the traffic, leaving, we already have a traffic light there, so I think that's an advantage, but on the way in, where people are hesitant, there's a stop sign there that they might take some extra time to read the addresses on the building, or read a directory, we don't, we just don't want a pileup of service vehicles behind them.
Okay. Commissioner Higley? Are you set, Commissioner Holinski?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
How do you keep your clients from using the service entrance? Because that cuts out two lights on Hazard Avenue if you use the back entrance.
Extreme signage, if you, if you come to the campus today, we have signs that are, you know, four feet by eight feet to direct people around there, we're gonna sign it appropriately, to make it very clear that that's what it's gonna be used for, and it's really not gonna be a convenient entrance, if you come in through that service entrance, you have to drive the full length of the property all the way to the back, and then would have to do a U-turn to come back through, and you would miss all of the signage to all the buildings you were trying to access, so, unless it was somebody, somebody that was a very frequent visitor and very motivated, I, I think it would certainly be the exception to the rule, I don't think people are gonna seek it as an entrance, and it will, we're, we're gonna go to extremes for the signage, because we don't, we don't want our patients entering through the back of our buildings either.
In the back of the building now, this, for clarification, the back of the building now still has the temporary south road entrance, which will then become a fire road only at the end of this construction, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Alamo?
Yeah, so we're here for the text change tonight, and so I agree with you 100% that it is bottleneck, it's dangerous, I think it's a public safety issue, on both the applications, yours and the assisted living, I went on the record to say I think this road should be widened, the state of Connecticut obviously was fine with it, they didn't make you do anything, but I agree, any cars that we can take out of the line there is gonna be very helpful. So when you come in with the design, are you gonna show a, a door for the delivery people, for the couriers to drop something, is there gonna be, because this is just, I don't see, this is just a text change here, right, there's no road design?
Correct, in, in our original application, we did show where that entrance comes in, In our original application, we did show where that entrance comes in, the loading dock for the new building at 148 Hazard Avenue. It's interceded right next to the loading dock, and then a large island and curb that keeps you from entering the parking lot from there. So it really, if you entered there...
Where would they be dropping off the packages, I guess I'm asking? Along that road on the east side, the new road here?
Yes.
There was a door, there'll be a door there?
Yep, there's, there's actually a ground-level loading dock. So there's a place for the trucks to pull into that road and then back up against the building off of the traffic lane.
So is this going to be it, or you'll be coming in with a road design, a driveway design for us?
Can I just chime in for a second, although this might not be appropriate, because this is not site-specific.
That's okay. Added information can help us in this instance, kind of a conclusion.
I did bring something that might be helpful.
This is text change.
If you would like to look at it. It's, this is a text change, but I brought some site-specific info.
Sure, please.
Which sometimes we do.
Sure, please.
So on the, the other thing I just wanted to add, Mr. Chair, if I could, on the widening, Mr.?
Lori wants her steps. So again, if I can just expand where you're, where you're going, this is basically a text change they're asking us to consider, but they do have some site-specific information that, you know, might lend it easiest for us to come to a conclusion on this.
So on the, can I just add, on a piece of...
Yeah, please.
On the widening, like I said, I was very concerned with your application and assisted living, and it frustrates me because if you, when Hazardville Water wanted to extend their water mandate, if you look just after going east, just after Big Y, you'll see fire hydrants 40 feet, 50 feet off the road, you'll say, why? Well, the state said back then they were going to widen the road. Guess what? They haven't widened the road. So it frustrates me, but I'm glad you're doing this, and I think it'll help safety-wise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the drawing.
Thank you. And I guess all this had before you... Yep, go ahead, Commissioner Gray. I'll let you go before me, please, by all means.
Because you gave us some site specifics, do you know the distance between this right-turn-only in driveway to the exit-only driveway at the property next door? Because that's going to be a huge issue. I am frequent both campuses, and I can envision someone thinking they're turning into an in driveway and they're actually turning into an exit driveway, and that driveway is very, very narrow and with a truck or whatever, a car, and having a collision, because it's a weird setup.
So, right here. Right here. It's right here.
Yeah, it's right there.
The other curb cut for the other, now I don't mean to interrupt you, but the other curb cut for the facility to the east of you, the exit of that is, I want to say, what?
Right next door.
15 yards? It's right there, and that's...
Even 15.
So if I, if I can expand, if I can expand on where you were going, if I may...
Please.
At least to my concern about this whole prospect, so if I may, I guess it's kind of my turn. When you, and I'm saying you, when, whenever the plans came in front of us a little bit over a year ago, and certainly we approved the temporary entrance for construction vehicles in that curb cut, and then you were lucky enough to get state approval for that, at least in this commissioner's mind, that was temporary. I knew you needed it for construction, whether the South Road was going to get open or not. I knew you needed it for construction. Come on, let's be honest. But my personal intent was, I wanted to see after the construction is done, when you were in abnormal operation, whether that entrance was still needed. That's the test I wanted to see. And that, now you're coming in front of us, asking us to do this text change prior to that. So I'm, I'm disturbed about that. So I just want to make that point. That was, let me finish all mine. So that was where I was coming from. I wanted the, the construction to be finished, the facility operational, and I'm sure it's going to be a fine facility, by the way, and it's really coming along nicely, before I wanted to vote, to look at whether you really needed this road or not. Having said that, one of the commissioners mentioned cars in line. Well, to me, in order to eliminate, because since you can't get into his when you're going west, if you're driving west on 190, you can't make the entrance into this, because it's slanted for only going east. So you're not going to eliminate anything in line for all those cars going east, and believe me, I know all about 190, how the state should be widening that road all the way up to the center of Hazardville, no doubt about it. But this entrance is not going to be alleviating any cars going east, because it's after the light, and that's just the way, nature of your property, it's after the light. So it's not really going to be decreasing traffic that much, maybe a little bit, they can turn off a little bit quicker, unfortunately, because it's after the light and you can't take this corner if you're going west. And, I mean, are you sure, even if we were to grant this, that the state is going to give you a permanent another curb cut? They want to eliminate curb cuts on Hazard Avenue, 1 Elm Street. You're creating another one. There's already six curb cuts in what, that, what, 50-yard radius from, on both sides, north and south, there's a tremendous amount of curb cuts. They don't want any more curb cuts. They want us to eliminate curb cuts. And then I look at the, at the, the proposed text amendment here, Section 550-1A. To me, I mean, it's too site-specific. I, I'm not in this business to write spot, spite, site-specific things anymore unless it was an emergency. This is clearly and cleverly, and I'm not saying it wasn't done correctly, for just almost your facility, where I'd be looking at some, I look at things general across town. It's not just Hazard Avenue, it's Elm Street also, and Route 5. It's everything, South Road. I'm not going to be looking at it just, how can I make this fit for one client on Hazard Avenue, or one client within a one-mile radius, because they have 500 feet or more frontage. And even that, thank you for that map, quite frankly, there's, from my standpoint, way too many properties there. I'd only feel comfortable with only two, and I saw five properties that qualify for it. So I just want to let you know, my concern here, and I wanted to share that with, with the rest of my commissioners, so after that I'll get off my soapbox. So I just wanted to voice to you my concerns. For me anyways, to go forward, I don't even know how I feel about going forward at this point. I wanted the way to you were done and operational, and I want to make this a lot less site-specific, which means that maybe we don't do it at all, because I'm looking at it from town as a global standpoint, the whole community, not just one street. And I agree with Commissioner Lamo, it's, that, that street's awful, and the state needs to do something about it, but that's not up to us. Commissioner Lamo?
Yep, just to follow up, the point you made, Mr. Chair. So yes, there is a light before that.
Yeah.
But it's why the light's green as well, where my scenario plays in. It's why the light is green, people are going through.
Okay.
You know, so now you have a vehicle that has to slow down, and so I didn't...
I'll grant you that.
Yeah.
I'll grant you that.
And, um, I think...
Free-flow traffic.
Yeah, it just keeps the traffic moving.
Yeah.
And, you know, and obviously, people that are going there are in need of some kind of health issue.
Yep.
Maybe more on the elderly side. I'm old too now, I'm 65 almost, so getting there. And I think the question was the distance, the width between the two driveways. We didn't get that answer. We got this, but go ahead on that. I think that was your initial question.
Let me see if I can answer some of the chair's questions, as well as the distance question. First of all, I think, I guess, and I'm going to apologize, because I think there may have been some miscommunication or misconception about when we were going to submit this application. And actually, Dana and I had a little conversation about that, and I was not aware, but he was, and he said, I think I may have made a mistake. He goes, I think maybe they were expecting this was going to come after it was completed, and I thought we meant after construction had started, and we seen it operate with construction traffic for a while, and I submitted the application, maybe I shouldn't have. So he was aware, and he said...
Fair enough.
You may hear something about that at the meeting. I heard it.
Yeah. So you could tell him.
Got it.
And I totally understand, so I wasn't trying to be bashing you.
No, I understand. I understand. I get it, but I just, I wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
Because he was aware, and he said, maybe I wasn't supposed to submit this yet, so we're here.
Thank you.
So maybe we deal with it now, as we may, I'm not sure. But to talk a little bit more about some of your concerns, and legitimate concerns, but we did have a conversation with Scott Hesketh about, well, do you think the DLT's going to approve this? And his answer was emphatically, yes. He said, if they weren't going to approve this, they wouldn't have approved the temporary construction drive. He said, it's that simple. You got the construction drive, they would approve this. They, they're going to feel that this is a good thing. From our position, it's, it's really more of a public safety thing than anything else to try and get the delivery trucks, the everyday delivery guys, out of as much as we can, the traffic flow with patients, employees, doctors, the other folks who come in here. I'm older than Mr. Lamo.
No, sir.
By, by a fair amount, and I have been here. And I remember the first time I went there, and I'm looking at the signs, I go, I don't know which building I'm supposed to go in, and I ended up in the wrong building, and I, and they said, oh, no, you've got to go to that building over there. I said, okay, thank you. I found it, but I understand, it's, it's, you know, you're coming in there if you haven't been there before, you, you kind of find your way around. And after I did it the first time, it was very easy, and, and it was a great experience for me, quite honestly, but that's neither here nor there. But try to eliminate, you know, the delivery trucks, and keep them out of there and keep them out of the flow. The distance from driveway center to driveway center, based on what, the construction drive that's there now, is about 75 feet apart.
Yeah.
They're close. And a final design, which Scott Hesketh would be assisting us with, is going to show probably something, it may even come a little more west in terms of this entrance, and more of a turn, so that it's very clear that this is a right-turn-in-only, it'll be signed very well, probably more than one sign as you come down the frontage. Trinity, delivery entrance, next right, something to that effect, so that it's very clear. And, and I think what, and we all find this, you know, we're creatures of habit, is that, you know, and I don't know what you have at your house, but I got the same UPS guy, and I got the same FedEx guy, or gal, or whoever it may be, that come to my house all the time, and I sometimes wonder who orders all that stuff, but we won't go there right now. And they learn to find you, you know, they find out. And, and it's the same thing here. They get the same products from the same companies, the same vendors, the same delivery guy, and once they find this, and maybe it may take them one shot, they're, they're going to know where they're going. And from Trinity's standpoint, the most important thing here, as I had said, is the safety and convenience to keep as much of that traffic away as we can from interaction with the mainstream patient, doctors, and employees. And as long as we're not being site-specific, I'll, I'll show you this and kind of show you how we anticipate that this is going to work. This is the new building. This is Hazard Avenue. The traffic light in the main entrance is located right here. We come in, we've got two lanes here, and we've got two lanes to exit. So doctors, patients, employees are going to come in this way. The delivery drive is down here. We come in, the business end of the building is right here. The dumpsters are over here. Truck comes in, pulls up, backs into the unloading area, does what he has to do. He then comes out and traverses all the way down this side of the building. We're out of the parking lot. We're not in here. We come down through, we come through this one section of parking lot, and now we come back into what is the main drive aisle, all the way back out and back out to Hazard Avenue. That would be the route that we would take. And the only interaction that we have is once we get here and then coming back on through. There is little or no parking, other than some handicap spots for this building that's located on the main driveway, and that was designed that way right from the beginning. This, this parking field is here, there's a little bit of parking here. For those of you who go here, now granted, we're expanding, and we hope to utilize more parking, you go back here now, there's never any cars there. Everybody's parked up here, except for this guy who went there the first time and went to the wrong building, which was back here and found out I had to go to the front, but that's neither here nor there. I did figure it out. Without this entrance, what's going to happen is, the delivery truck's going to come in here, we've got to be able to back into this load/unload area. We're going to come right through the main drive aisle, right here, and we've got a provision to knock out a little driveway here and do this, and then go back out the same way. So we're coming in, and we're going right through all the parking field that's right here for this brand-new building, and we'd rather not do that.
Well, not to be site-specific, because we shouldn't, but just, there is another option. You can, they could come in through the main and go all the way down in the back and come around.
Except we're now heading in the wrong direction.
And then they could turn around and come back out. But I'm just saying, there is another option. I'm not saying it's pleasurable, but, but now we're getting site, we shouldn't be doing site.
Exactly, to be able to back in, it's, we're heading the wrong way.
But basically, what you're asking us to, if I can, and please feel free to interrupt me, commissioners, anytime someone else wants to speak. Thank you. Is that, you're really asking us, and I'm looking at staff, too, I'm looking at Matt and Lori, when I'm, I'm looking what's in front of us, and I'm certainly, I'm not comfortable with writing a site-specific amendment-proposed requirement here as, as, as first cut in front of me. And as I looked, as I mentioned before, I'm looking at it more from a townwide standpoint. I'm just not comfortable carving out something for you guys, and I don't mean this offensive if it's going to come across, that should have been figured out from day one if you didn't get it. Because what are you going to do if, if we say, no, we're not?
So, so in, in respect to that, and respectful to your request, is, we're, we're going to be living with our existing condition. If we don't have that second driveway, it's going to be what it is today, plus a lot of deliveries. So that, that's why, from our perspective as the business owner, you're asked to wait until we were in operation. We're already in operation. We're, we're going to be running the same businesses, just in newer buildings with more volume of patients. So we're, we already know what this looks like, with how many delivery drivers come through, and how many lost patients we have, and people that stop to drop off people or read the signage. We already know what that existing condition looks like. So if you deny this, then we will continue to operate on our existing condition, which is not optimal for our patients.
Thank you. Thank you for that, honestly. I think I have it over here first.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I thought of another, but how do you, how do you actually prevent people from going out that way?
Exactly.
Service entrance. And you've got the curb cutting, but there's no physical way to actually prevent people from leaving there. I mean, if somebody sees a backup on Hazard Avenue, they're going to say, I'm going out the other way. There's another way right across the building, okay? And I don't care if there's a curb cut there, or tries to get me to go left, I'm going to go right.
And we see it in other places that have this...
I see it every day on that street, down by the Big Y Market.
Right.
Understood. The, the difference between what we're proposing in that entrance is, you, if you look at that lane where the delivery is and where that second curb cut is, you have to drive all the way to the back of the property, know where that curb cut is, to go all the way around that curb, through the, the park, you know, through the, the loading dock backwards to get back out to... That's a lot of motivation to do the wrong thing. So I, I guess in an extreme instance of somebody that has mal-intent, yes, they could. I'm sure we could look at hardware and signage to prevent that in, in a later proposal, when we actually do come to propose the second driveway. Of course, we're here just for the text amendment currently, but I think the design came in with a lot of intent to eliminate, you know, it's really camouflaged in the very back part of the property. So you would have to know this property pretty intimately in order to find that entrance and drive your way completely backwards and hope that there's not a vehicle there stopping you.
I'm just thinking, how do you, how do you prevent, at shift change, people will drive out that entrance, if they're over in that area, or if they're in the back.
The same way that we police parking right now with our staff. We have a lot of cameras and full-time guards that sit there watching those cameras. You can ask any of our employees, it doesn't take them more than a day parking in the wrong spot before they know it.
Okay.
So we would police it the same way.
But patients, but patients you really have no control over. I mean, they'll, they'll do it.
Yeah, human beings in any situation, correct?
People are in a hurry, they're going to be in a hurry, and says, I can go over there, and I can miss all this traffic from the other end.
Wrong way, do not enter, works pretty well for me. I think it does for most folks, except maybe some that drive after.
Not, it doesn't work that way on the Big Y lot.
Yeah, I think the Big Y lot that you're referring to is just a more obvious entrance to the road, and this, this is, you know.
You're not going to see this.
You're talking hun- hundreds of yards in the wrong direction, in order to get yourself faster onto 190.
Like, I mean, I think we need to get it back in scope. I think this is for the, this is for the text change.
Okay.
And I know I deviated too, but if I can.
Add a follow-up.
I know, but Lori wanted to get it, so, yes.
Does anybody else?
Well, yeah, there was, I think everybody, so, go ahead, Frank and Nick.
I just want, wanted to dovetail off, what you were talking about, the opening, having them open, remember, we were talking about getting it done?
Yeah, yeah.
Opening and come back. I, I think this might be better, because you're going to stay operationally old building until this building is ready and ready to go before any demolition. Now, with that said, that's a pretty big building. They have to fill that building up with structures, and tables, and cots, and everything that has to go in there before it opens. That's a lot of deliveries. The whole building has to be, I want to say built out, is that the right word? Built out or filled out? So the part about having them open at first to see, I, I think it's better for, to do this before they open, so they can, because that's a lot of traffic going in that main entrance while they're operating. That, what is it, three floors, four floors of space?
Two floors, but it's 50,000 square feet. And to my earlier point, we are open, you know? We're never going to be more.
Right, but you need to fill that new, the new building has to be filled up. I was, I would think, if this gets in, they're going to come in the service entrance.
Our, our volume of deliveries will certainly not be any higher than it is during this construction phase. Once we're finished, it'll diminish greatly.
I, I think doing it prior to opening makes more sense.
Kristen, and then Karun.
Mr. Chair, I, I do concur with the points you made before, very strong, and I think there are a lot of good ones, I agree. It's definitely appears to be very, very site-specific. It's, it's very, very detailed, very specific. Again, I think arguably overly specific, and at a time when we're going to consider major revisions on our regulations, I'm going to stress that I think we should be simplifying our regulations in a lot of places. I'm not sure that this is the complexity that we need to add, just on a more broad point. I'll, I'll point in, so we're, we're talking about adding this regulation to 5.50.1A, and I just want to point out, 5.50.1B, the point immediately after it, use of a single common curb cut to serve adjacent lots is encouraged. So this is, this is contradicting that, so, so that point.
Which one?
5.50.1B, so, so that's actually saying, we prefer less than one curb cut per lot. That's what our current regulation is saying today. And this one, we're saying, we want to put before it to encourage the complete opposite. You mentioned about the state wanting to decrease curb cuts. That should also be our stance as well. That should be something we're paying close attention to, because curb cuts, right, the more there are, the more potential conflict areas there are. Even though these are right turns, which I, I understand are definitely the, the safer ones, it's still another vehicle slowing down further in the road that wasn't happening. So, so it's potentially an additional area of conflict. It's not just a vehicle slowing down, and to make a right turn, it, it could be a vehicle slowing down, speeding up, and then slowing down again, potentially making it even worse. And then considering, this was brought up, but considering, again, the impact overall on the area, not just the site, is, it was alluded to multiple times, having too many driveways can also confuse motorists, cause people to turn into the wrong driveways. So this is also something to strongly consider. And then finally, I think my last point would be in the same section, 5.50.1C, is one of the, it's a brief one, but it's also a very, very arguably site-specific line in our regulations, possibly even concerning this, this property. I, I can't say for sure the history of it. But again, it, it's something that already exists. I don't really care that it exists in the regulations, seemingly addressing one specific property, and, and I'd be very hesitant to add more of those, so.
Thank you.
That just.
You're all set? Thank you very much for your comments. Commissioner Majerdar.
Yeah, thank you. The idea that delivery vehicles exit a different driveway than the one that's by the traffic light is great. I like the idea. Makes it a little more, perhaps, patient-sensitive, service-sensitive. It's a great idea. I would be in favor of granting such an approval. However, the way it's written is a little too site-specific. However, this commission has seen text amendments in the past, many years. I've been on the other side before, and it is always the applicant for a specific site that comes in for text amendment, so it's not new. Okay. The BP zone is some part of Hazard Avenue, and it is quite heavily trafficked. Somewhere in the proposed text changes, there is a 500-foot continuous linear feet provision, and there is also a single ownership provision. Looking at it from a traffic point of view, and I took my traffic courses many years ago, I would envision what's called, or was called, service roads along the sides of a highway. And you do see them in Hartford and many other areas and many cities. We have many parcels that are less than 500 feet frontage. We have many parcels that are considerably smaller. In this particular case of the Trinity site, you have two driveways, one in, one out. One is right now temporary. So if there is a way we could write, or come up with text that says, service driveways combining several properties would be a better way to control traffic, as well as to minimize Hazard Avenue traffic issues, I'd be very much in favor. So my suggestion is to look at the amendment, so that you service more than a single lot of 500 feet, or more or less, at the moment. Yes, it would require private owners to talk to each other and cooperate with each other. Town doesn't have that kind of flexibility. However, the private owners may have a little more flexibility. So that would be one way to minimize curb cuts, as well as actual curb cut geometric design can be taken care of as and when it happens, aside specifics. But this is definitely an area that the staff, as well as the applicants, may want to look into. Single ownership for a lot, that doesn't really help when you have such so many small, as well as large owners. So that's definitely an issue. There are many other conditions here that seem to go back to our own buffer requirements between various zones, our own site distance requirements, that are more engineering concerns than planning concerns. There are more safety concerns as to have a triangular type island for a right turn or a left turn. So there are many other issues that we don't really need here. We could have our technical experts review it, look at it, and so on, so forth. But I would definitely like this 500 feet and single ownership issue, a little more looked into, in bigger depth, in greater depth, so that it becomes a BP zone, rather than a specific Trinity property zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Majerdar. If I can, Lori, you wanted to add something here, or Matt, I'm sure, I think one of you had your hand up before.
So I just, when we started this with, with Trinity, I think they were the ones that came to us and said, we'd like to consider this. And actually, staff did, Matt, actually, did assist them in trying to come up with some sort of a regulation that would work. I just want to just, just kind of pull out some points. I think that it can be less specific, and it should be a little bit more general, but I think that the fact that they're looking just for right in only for service entrances is, is, you know, that's significant, because they could be asking for a full second drive. And, and I agree that that should not be the case. But I think, you know, we could look at things like accident reports for this site-specific drive, however, we're not looking at the site-specific things right now. Apparently not.
You'll catch a 22.
But, you know, that might be something that we could work on. You know, I, I think in certain circumstances, it might be a better flow for sites, maybe not for all. Some of the sites that they've referenced are actually already constructed, so the All-American is one of the sites that Jay pointed out. So that's one less site that will have the frontage. And, you know, for all intents and purposes, most of the sites probably won't ever need this. But, you know, it could be a special permit, and, you know, just things to consider.
Thank you. Let me, let me just pause for a second here, just to get through one of the technical things I have to do, because this is a public hearing. You guys don't have to get up, I don't think. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak for or against this applicant? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak for or against this applicant? For the third time, seeing none, that technicality's up with for tonight. I'm looking here, where we are, did, so let me, let me just, I'm not, I'm looking here for consensus. Is there a consensus to move forward in having staff with this applicant investigate this further to come up with possibly less site-specific language that would change our regulations? Okay? Chris, you can't.
Are you looking at me?
Yeah.
What is my name?
Oh, you're, I'm not taking a vote, I'm just saying, to proceed, are you interested in having staff proceed to take a look at this more?
Property next door here has two drives, two, two of the properties. The former bank.
Yeah.
The town annex, and then the former A&amp;P, which is a number of shops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you, can, or you want, staff can pursue, or you want to end it?
No, I want to end it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. I can't hear you, so I'm guessing the audience can't.
Kenny wants to end it.
No, I, I, I have a lot of issues with this language, because I can see this being, right now, it's kind of a site-specific.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if we start opening up this, it's not, it's not going to be a right in only. Somebody's going to come along and say, well, I've got 700 feet, I can have a right and a left. So now we've got a bigger can of worms. So that, no.
You're a no?
No.
Continue? Yes or no?
Yes, I mean, I would, it's not going to happen, there's no votes, I'm ready to vote for this the way it is, but if anything can be done with staff and with the applicant to make this happen, I think we should. Trinity has been a great partner in Enfield, and they're still here, and we need to do what we can do to make this work.
Okay, Karun.
Yeah, I think I'd like to have the staff look at it from an overall BP zone point of view, rather than a single specific site point of view. So I'm in favor of continuing the process of revising the text.
Okay. I'm looking at consensus, and the consensus is not, in the majority, to continue. So we have an option here at this point, so, having said that, didn't take votes, looking for consensus, and the consensus is not to continue.
Could I address the chair, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I would like to make a request on behalf of the applicant in Trinity, that you continue the hearing until your next meeting, to give us the opportunity to take consideration into some of the comments we heard here this evening, and come back to you with some modifications that maybe would give you the comfort level that you might need to consider the application, and not close the hearing and vote tonight.
So wasn't the consensus three to three? I think that's a, that's a, that's an, an honest proposal, but I'm not sure that that's really going to make a difference, to be quite frank with you, at this point in time. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm looking here, I think I know my fellow commissioners well enough to, to know that, and I'm willing to take a vote here, Commissioner Laimo.
I'm going to be very honest with you. I've been doing this for 40-something years.
Yep, please.
And I've never had a commission deny a request by an applicant to continue hearing.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I want to do that either, I'm just trying to gauge the proper legal way to gauge the consensus here of my, the commission that I represent, and what they want to do.
Well, then I guess I don't understand what the issue is. It seems like commissions typically are here to be helpful and try and help us with an application, and I guess I'm not hearing that here.
Well, I think that's, that's a little unfair, but I totally understand where you're coming from.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I am willing to say, work on it. This doesn't work for me at all. I'm going to be very honest, the way it's written, it doesn't work.
We hear that, you would like the opportunity to be able to.
And because when we do this text change, it's not going to be just for Trinity.
Right.
It's going to be across town, and Trinity is a good partner for Enfield. But there's going to be a time Trinity decides to move on, because of whatever reason, and that campus becomes something else. That person who owns it, and we have to plan for the future, we can't just plan for today. And we've had this happen with big corporations come, we want this, we want this, we say yes, stay here for 20, 30 years, 40 years, they move on for whatever reason, all those conditions still stay. So we have to think of not just Trinity, we have to think of Enfield. And if this can be reworked, I may reconsider. But as it's written right now, I don't see this, because it's across town. That's my personal feeling.
So having heard Vice Chairman DeGray add now, makes it a little bit more of a majority of people that want to reconsider something, so I'll entertain a motion to keep this public hearing open, to table it, and instruct the applicant to work with staff to take a re-look at this for the next meeting.
So moved.
Matt had some comments?
I'm sorry, Matt, then, then see you, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just, just a couple of practical things. We are not going to get much accomplished in two weeks. That's just the reality. And then the second thing is going to be, based on the conversation that I've heard tonight, the potential scope of the changes to this text are going to be significant. And we may have to re-notice the hearing, depending upon the scope and the nature of those changes. We'd have to talk to the town attorney, I suppose, about that. So I completely appreciate the conversation, it was an interesting conversation, a lot of time spent on site specifics, and it is a difficult question. And I agree that it's a legislative matter, so it is a policy question. And you can't just look at a particular site, you do have to think about whether it's the BP zone, or townwide, or within particular corridors that are of concern. That's really what you're doing, it's your planning function, your policy. So I, I, I would almost recommend that we either withdraw the application, or we extend the hearing into, into the September meeting, and, and provide us with a real opportunity to sit down and evaluate what you have before you. And then that would also give us sufficient time, potentially, if we needed to, to re-advertise text, which we may likely have to do, depending on the scope of what you have. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, and that for your consideration.
Yes, thank you very much, because we will not be meeting in August, and we only have one more meeting in July. This doesn't necessitate any kind of special meeting in August to take form, so Matt brings up some very good points. So I'm looking again for some consensus, what you guys want to do. Do you want the staff to continue with this, and the applicant fully realizing that we might going to get back to this, if we do it all, be in September?
That's fine with us, there's, there's no real urgency here. Obviously, there's a lot of construction work still to happen, and, and we do have time on our side, and if we do need to withdraw and reapply, that's certainly something that could be done as well.
Okay, so then I recommend that we probably keep this public hearing open, and let the applicant work it out with staff going forward, knowing that they have two months, whatever. Does that sound reasonable to everyone? Does that sound reasonable to the applicant?
That's fine with us, and I'd just like to say thank you, I appreciate the opportunity for us to work on it a little further.
No problem. So I'm going to entertain a motion to keep the public hearing open and table PH 3070ZA.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, is there a second?
Second.
Vice Chairman, by Vice Chairman DeGray, to keep public hearing 3070ZA open, and to table it. All those in favor, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? The record shows unanimous to, keep the public hearing open?
Excuse me, it was not unanimous.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I apologize. It was not unanimous. So it was six to one. Thank you, Kenny, I missed that. Right? I think, staff, you're, Lori and Matt, you got good, clear direction, at least somewhat on this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Moving on to the next one.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of July 13th, 2023, at 7:00 at the Town Hall Council Chambers at 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, concerning PH 3072, 117 North Street, application for home occupation truck and earth materials.
truck, and earth material storage. Joseph LaCory, applicant owner, map 93, lot 15, I-1 zone.
The applicant, to the representative here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I think the Matt mic is still on, I believe.
I believe, yes, it's on.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, Wes Wentworth, Wentworth Civil Engineers, Lebanon, Connecticut. I'm a professional engineer and soil scientist here on behalf of the owner and applicant. I was passed some last-minute information from Laurie. You want me to just proceed with my presentation, or?
I think you should proceed at least with the brief presentation.
All right. Can we put the digital maps up, if possible? Alex, you can use the map to find, to find a follow. There we go.
Got it, Alex.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
No ad control here. All right. Let's get my maps open. So what's on you on the screen here is Sheet 3 of the Site Development Plan, and as you recall, we were here in March for, this is one of two properties that we were here to get an earth excavation and a cleanup of a, of a site and to allow it to be converted to an agricultural zone that included this property known as 117 North Street, and also the property to the east. Those were both before you at that time. What's before you tonight is solely on, and both those properties are controlled by Mr. LaCory as owner. What's before you tonight is simply the 117 North Street, which is a 24 and 1/2 acre parcel located in the I-1 zone. There's an existing single-family residence at the front of the property in this area. The western half of the site is currently in tobacco, as well as the frontage of this site along North Street. So the, there are existing agricultural uses going on there, as well as two tobacco barns in the center of the site in this area. So I'm not going to go to Sheet 4, which is just a blow-up of the proposed activities, but I just wanted to give you an overall sense of what we're looking at here. So this is a, the same site, but blown up to a larger scale of one inch equals 40 feet. Again, this is Sheet 4. The existing single-family residence in the front of the site here, and the existing drive, and here are the tobacco barns here. So mapping was updated in November of last year, just before we submitted that application that was ultimately approved in March to allow the processing of materials and removal of materials to allow, and it actually went backwards and took care of a past excavation, but in the long term is, that was approved there is to get this whole area through the center of the site that was disturbed converted into agricultural land, cropland, for expanding the tobacco-growing facility. At that time, it was decided, we had also applied for a home office and a trucking business here. At that time, it was decided by the commission to separate those out and only approve the land disturbance activities, and a request was made to us to come back for these business-specific and to separate the two applications. That was done, and we've resubmitted, and that's why we're here tonight. So we're here under Section 4.50.5 to allow a home office within the, the single-family residence. This is Mr. LaCory's residence, this is where he lives. And we're also here for Section 6.20 for truck parking and a small amount of earth material storage and some proposed bunkers. We're proposing to do a concrete slab in this area and do storage bins in the, the concrete block, mafia block-type layout that would allow one or two loads in each of those bins to come in at night, be dumped off, and then possibly trucked back out by Mr. LaCory's dump trucks in the future. It's not a large, not a large area, and it's just as part of the construction offices and facilities, or as Laurie's also termed it, the contractor's storage yard. So what is proposed is to have processed asphalt millings put down, have two spaces here for trailer trucks, and another five spaces for triaxles. And then in this area to the east of the tobacco shed would be parking for those employees that drive the trucks. And then this area here is where those concrete storage bins would be for earth materials. This entire area is wooded through here and currently buffered. Beyond that wood line, there's a, a berm of topsoil and shredded bark mulch that's providing further screening into the site from North Street. So everything is screened from view in that sense. That is all I have on this application. If I could just add one more thing before we get into the next thing. Town staff went out and inspected the site today. It's my opinion that they have found violations in the existing approved permit from March, and I think that's what the subject is. I don't, I mean, obviously, these two are combined, but I do, Laurie had a closing comment where he just said that those violations make this application incomplete. I disagree with that. I think there's violations in place right now that need to be corrected before we can move forward, and we can, we can table or move on or, or, or extend the public hearing to rectify that situation, but I, I don't believe that makes tonight's application incomplete because it's a, it's a temporary violation that can be easily corrected. But we can, I just, I just didn't want those, because wisely, the commission chose to separate the two, and that's, that's why I'd like to keep the review in that, if we could.
Okay, thank you. Then thank you for your, your honest opinion, understanding the position you're in. Staff have que, excuse me, does the commission have questions for the poor applicant's representative? This, Commissioner Graham, sorry, didn't see your hand.
You're saying you believe they're just minor violations?
I, I didn't say minor, I said temporary.
Temporary. From the photos that I received, and I'm sure you have the same photos, this looks like it's going to take a lot of time to clean up and rectify. So I don't know what the timeline would be for these temp, as you call them temporary, I'm going to use your term, to rectify it, but to table this would probably need extension. And from my understanding, with all of the past history, we've been very patient in trying to get these things rectified and corrected. So in your opinion, what would you say would be a timeline to fix these temporary violations, since we've been going for a couple of years now?
Well, that is a difficult question for me to answer. I just found out about these when I walked in tonight before the meeting. I have not had communications with Mr. LaCory. I have not had communications with town staff. What needs to be removed and processed? A, a lot of the things that, from what I'm seeing in the pictures, are spot areas of something new that came in, and I think they came in relatively recently, based on what I'm reading. So that makes me think it, say it came in over the period of six weeks, could certainly get rid of it a lot quicker than it even came in. That would be my recommendation to the commission, and that's what my recommendation to Mr. LaCory would be, would be to get it out and get it out now and faster. But I think it's realistic to say that that could happen within six weeks, it could happen within three weeks. Any necessary extensions, we would be more than willing to grant on behalf of the applicant. But like I said, without full staff communication to say, it's this, 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 and this, I wasn't at the meeting with them today on site.
I, I understand, I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
So I'm, I'm trying not to get myself pigeonholed, but.
But one of the comments was that there was a truck that came in from another town, and it was a town truck, and the employee didn't know if there was a contract with this Mr. LaCory or what was going on. He was just doing his job.
Yep.
And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but this has been.
There's a clear violation of, of the permit, I mean.
Right. But this has been going on for several years, and.
I understand.
That's why I'm asking. Give me a timeline, because I'm tired of seeing this coming up.
Sure. All involved agree with that sentiment.
Didn't we give a timeline? And I don't, this, this application's different from the prior application, because we just physically split it off. But on the prior approval, wasn't there a timeline on that when he had to have it cleaned up by?
Eighteen months, yes, sir.
Was it eighteen months? I couldn't remember, and that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
For, for the reclamation.
For the reclamation, correct.
Twenty-three.
Any questions, any questions for the applicant? Laurie, do you have, Laurie, do you have something you want to add?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I, as I was writing this, I asked our zoning enforcement officer to just go out to the site and see what the status was, and he did go out today. And you've received numerous pictures that he's taken of trucks that are being stored there. They're from California. I mean, they're not even local. There is new piles of construction debris. There is new piles that was just created today, as, you know, enhanced the existing pile of brush and wood and whatever else was in that truck. It seems to, it's, as usual, it seems to be a moving target, unfortunately. As far as the application, as it stood, as it was applied for, I think the plan was good. It was complete. However, I guess what I'd like to do is, is read what I wrote this afternoon, just to give you kind of an overall. So this site is the subject of a stipulated judgment that was signed in January 5th, 2021. The judgment in part allows a temporary stay to allow the applicant time to proceed with the application process to secure the necessary permits for, for the work proposed on the site. On March 13th, 2023, the applicant received approval for the reclamation of the property, which did include an excavation permit with the, the use of a wood chip grinder for reclamation of past activities. In addition, one of the conditions of approval was that no other materials such as wood, stumps, concrete, asphalt, construction debris, et cetera, may be brought onto the site. The exception is stone and gravel specifically for the hauling business operation. This was also required under the stipulated judgment, that nothing was to be brought on the site since 2021. The application for the home occupation excavation permit and contractor's storage were denied. The motion made by Commissioner Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Higley, to deny the home occupation, truck parking, earth material storage, and processing and construction offices and facilities was denied due to this, due to separate, the, the desire for the commission to have the application separated, so they could be regulated individually. The current application is specifically for a contractor's storage yard and a home occupation. The, the uses of truck parking and processing were removed from their requested uses. So when they first requested it.
Excuse me, Laurie, can we pause for a minute?
Yep.
We're getting, and I know, I know, I know what this is like for people who are watching live. Alex, we're having a problem here?
Is that Matt's link, maybe?
Is it Matt?
Sounds like trying to reconnect.
Yeah.
I think we lost YouTube as well.
Lost.
Overall network.
Oh.
Yeah, we lost the meeting. I think we lost YouTube as well.
YouTube.
Oh dear, your call has dropped.
Let me just keep calling.
We could take a five-minute recess if you think.
Yeah, it's a five-minute recess.
Sorry, everybody.
Okay.
Entertain a motion to take a, take a five-minute recess. Motion made by Commissioner Madhur Dar, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley for a five-minute recess. Sorry, everybody, we, we lost our connectivity.
Yep. Okay, so I will continue on. So based on the site visit today, the applicant continues to accept materials such as construction debris, tree stumps, wood, and other materials, parking out-of-state trucks that are not part of the LaCory Sand and Gravel LLC business. So currently, the application appears to be incomplete. The applicant has continued uses such as collection of construction debris, wood, and stumps. These, of course, will involve processing. Should the applicant wish to continue these uses, the request should have been included in the application. Instead, these uses were deliberately omitted from the current application, and this is also in violation of the stipulated judgment. The existing conditions map is not accurate. It does not include truck parking and the new piles of wood, brush, and construction debris, nor any modifications to date of the site for the reclamation. So per the stipulated judgment, the business activities have a stay until applications are approved. Since these activities are not permitted via the stipulated judgment or the special use permit for the reclamation, one can only conclude that they are part of the business and not reflected with the current application. So therefore, it is incomplete. So I'm not sure where to go from here, but he obviously has not applied for everything that he seems to be doing, because he's not allowed to be doing any of these things based on the reclamation or the stipulated judgment. So one can only interpret that to mean that this is part of the business.
Thank you. Commissioner Higley.
Through the chair to staff. If we denied this tonight, what would be the town's next step?
Probably go back to court. I will say I have not had an opportunity to discuss this with the town attorney, as this was just revealed to me this afternoon.
So if I, I'm sorry, Frank, if, so as chairman, may I, I'm looking at you, Lori, and I know Matt's, I think Matt's still on, but I'm not sure. Based on that, not that, not that I have a problem going to the attorneys and going to court, because I really don't, come from a justice family. Some of you are well aware, I have attorneys in my family. But would it be in our best interest and maybe in the applicant's if we tabled this until you had an opportunity to discuss with the town attorney of what our next step should be? I know that's maybe be displeasurable to some of the commissioners. I think a lot of us wanted to really come in here thinking just the opposite on this application tonight, to be quite honest with you. But based on what has transpired, would that possibly be in the best interests of everyone at this point?
It certainly would give us the opportunity to get some questions answered.
Commissioner Alamo.
Thank, thank you. I've brought this up in the past about legal stuff going on, legal opinions, updates with applications in front of us with the same names on them. We had a meeting with the town attorney, all of us, get some questions answered, which was very helpful. I mentioned that to him, and he said at any time, if we want, because we never do, have executive sessions. The word stipulation was mentioned six times. That's a legal word.
Yeah.
I would like to request that we have an executive session on this with the town attorney. This is going on too long.
Considering what?
Because it's a legal thing. It's been in court. It's been, now we're talking about stipulated agreements. There's violations. The town code enforcement officer went out there today on Lori's behalf, day of the application, takes a bunch of pictures.
All right, so I'm...
I, I, I mean, wait, Mr. Chair, wait. You know, it's talking about truck parking. There's a brand-new business across the street with trucks parked there, material, and I haven't heard anything about that. They didn't even come to us. New England Landscaping, I guess it is. I drive up that road every day. I live on that road.
That's not part of this application.
I know it's not, but there's something else right there across the street. I mean, I would like to sit with the town attorney on this before we take any action. I'm very uncomfortable.
So we're requesting that the next meeting at 6:30 PM, we're going to have a town attorney here to talk about this particular application only, and what a stipulated judgment means, because we apparently have one or two commissioners that don't understand.
I know what it means.
I'm making that request as the chairman, 6:30. So I'm also going to make a request tonight that we keep this public hearing open and that we table this until the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, I know what a stipulated judgment means.
Matt has something to say.
Yep. Matt, go ahead. Thank you. Karan.
Frank, Mr. Chair, no disrespect intended, a better course would probably be to leave this hearing open, allow staff to go and consult with the town attorney, because having an executive session on an application while an application is still open and proceeding might not be the right choice. So we'd like the opportunity to discuss that with the town attorney and get some feedback from them as to whether or not that would be an appropriate option.
So, so I would say...
Go ahead.
If you're going to discuss it with the town attorney, mention my concerns, the meeting we had with him, and what he told us we can do. And if it's okay, and he thinks we could have a executive session before the next meeting, we have time to put it on the agenda. I, I don't have, like, questions about this particular application. I want to get a background of what the heck is going on here. We've been, I've been looking at this thing for, since I've been on the board. This is, we have to resolve this thing, and I feel uncomfortable. I don't understand all that's happened. Now we have day of the hearing pictures coming in. And Lori giving us, come on.
I think part of the problem, Frank, if I can, is we have an applicant that's not really complying.
But we, I want to, the town attorney said to us, I don't know, we were all there, I think some, most of us were there, we can have an executive session. And I mentioned specifically, when there's applications in front of us and the same name appears on the application than appears in the town attorney's report. So he said, anytime. So ask him if we could have, I would like to have...
Yeah. So will you please ask him if we can have an executive session on the LaCory matter? If not, then we can't.
We'll make the request of the town attorney.
Right. If he says it's not appropriate, fine.
And do you need any, would you like to have any other specific information from the town attorney about any terms that, or?
No, I don't know what a stipulated agreement is. I entered into a few of them. I know exactly what they are.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Entertain Commissioner Holinski.
Karan was first with you. Now, as more concerned, does the, Mr. LaCory, does he understand what all stipulations have been placed by the court, by this commission during the approval, or does he understand what all it means? I'm not looking for an answer. What I'm asking you, or Mr. LaCory is, if you do understand, how difficult is it to comply with it? Thank you.
Thank you, Karan. Commissioner Holinski.
I would feel more comfortable if the staff could do an analysis about whether or not we should have an executive session.
That's what we'll do.
The town attorney. And that's, that's what I'm looking for. I mean, I think you guys are our experts here, and you need to kind of guide us in this particular thing. If there are questions, then we can get questions answered, okay? But I think we ought to step back a bit, and let's organize this, this session going forward, however we want to do that.
Lori? No, Lori, you go ahead.
So I would, I would say, moving forward, if you were to table this public hearing, staff will consult with the attorneys. If they feel the, an executive session is warranted, we will have that. But otherwise, staff will work with them to move forward to whatever the next steps are.
Okay. Sounds reasonable to me. Reasonable to everybody? So entertain a motion to table, keep this public hearing open, and to table PH 3072. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner, actually, Commissioner Alamo seconded it. So Vice Chairman DeGray and Commissioner Alamo seconded it.
As long as we get an answer from the town attorney, I'm good with it.
Okay. All those in favor of keeping this public hearing open and table, signified by saying aye. The record shows unanimous. We'll wait to receive further information.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Lori.
Good luck. Moving on now to new business. These are not public hearings. These are site plan reviews. Moving on to 161 Post Office Road. Do you want to read it? Do you want to read, Linda? Yeah, go ahead. SPR 1918.
SPR 1918, 161 Post Office Road, application for a retail development, Garrett Homes LLC, applicant, and Mitchell Woltchner, thank you, owner, map 68, lot 232, BL zone.
Thank you. So the applicant and her representatives are here.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robin Pearson. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Garrett Homes LLC. Pleasure to be back in front of you again. Tonight, we have a site plan application with regard to the lot that you recently approved as part of a re-subdivision application of Mr. Broggnar's property. And I would like to, oh, I should give you my address for the record. So I'm with the firm of Alter and Pearson in Glastonbury, Connecticut, 701 Hebron Ave. Again, this is a retail development. Come on over. At 161 Post Office Road for 10,700, approximately 10,700 square feet. With me this evening is Sarah Conley, who is with BKA Architects, and also Tim Hool, who is with BL Companies and is our engineer of record. I think there's, it's pretty straightforward application, but what I'd like to direct you to, just to sort of set the table, if you will, before Tim goes through the site specifics, I'd like to refer to the staff report. Staff indicated in its review comments to you that there are several matters that I, on behalf of the applicant, was to be working on, and I just want to report on the status of that. We have offered to the town council the open space area. There's a deed that's been signed. It's held in escrow, waiting for the town council's decision on whether or not that will be accepted. As you recall, there was an alternative in case it was not, and that was to encumber the site with a, with the open space area with an open space conservation restriction. Staff has reviewed our subdivision, re-subdivision paper prints for filings, and as of today, I believe he signed off on it as, as meeting their requirements. We are waiting for, we're going to be presented with soon, a bond document that you would like us to enter into, which we will do. And so the MYLAR for the re-subdivision, which he notes as item four, to be provided, that can be prepared momentarily, having just received the sign-off today from staff. So he went on to say that he is still awaiting more comments. I believe specifically it's from the engineer, though it doesn't say that. We have not received any engineering comments to date. I know he's begun his review of planning. As he notes in his report to you, it's a pretty straightforward application, and he does not anticipate any major issues, as the site plan is fairly basic and the use is permitted as of right in this BL zoning district. However, since, as we've heard, you know, you've not been of, a mind to move forward on an application without having received a draft recommendation or possible motion to act upon from staff, that obviously has not happened at this point. It's, we do anticipate and, and expect it'll go forward for final consideration at your meeting on the 27th. Please do let us know if there's an issue with that at all, because timing is critical for my client with regard to beginning the work and fulfilling contractual obligations with the owner of the property. So the only thing we do request is that when staff, I know Matt's been out, we would definitely like to get any comments from staff as soon as possible, so we'll have a chance to make sure there are no open issues by the time we're back in front of you on the 27th. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tim, and then he will turn it over to Sarah. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay with this?
I think it's working, yeah. Just identify yourself for the record, please. Yeah.
My name is Tim Hool, civil engineer from BL Companies. Our address is 100 Constitution Plaza in Hartford. So as Robin mentioned, I will go through the proposed development. I have the, the existing conditions plan up first. I'll kind of just lay the groundwork, if you will, for the existing site that we are starting from. As Robin mentioned, we were before you for a subdivision recently, last month. The plan shown is the existing condition survey. This does not show the subdivision parcel. I have that on the next sheet, but we have North Arrow pointing straight up on this plan sheet. So the larger parcel is known as 161 Post Office Road. The JFK Middle School was located to the north. We have Post Office Road down to the southwest, Raffia Road to the due west, and then we have the, the wetlands and Brook area over to the east. We did subdivide the parcel, creating the new parcel up in this, the northwest corner. As a result of going through that subdivision process, we've worked with town staff, both planning and engineering. We have worked through some, some address formalities. The new parcel we've agreed to will be known as 161 Raffia Road, and at the request of town staff, we're going to renumber what is known now as 161 Post Office Road, and that is going to be 231 Post Office Road. So it fits in between the existing street numbers.
So if I can, if I can ask a question, I don't mean to interrupt just my own education here. Can we, since they file it this way, we still have to refer to this as SPR 1918 161 Post Office Road? Or once the MYLARS are filed, can we start referring to this as SPR 1918 161 Raffia Road?
Well, once they're, once they're filed, it's not going to matter. So, I mean, this application came in under 161 Post Office. So...
Still have to keep it that way.
So that's what it will remain as until...
I'm just asking that, so that, quite frankly, the public probably would want to consider this as Raffia Road or Post Office, but that's okay. I just wanted to get that in the record. Thank you.
So quickly, jumping ahead to the subdivision plan, this does rotate the plan view a bit. So north is now pointed to the top left. We have the JFK Middle School over to the plan left, and Raffia Road to the bottom of the plan sheet. The, the parcel recently created is located down here in the bottom-left corner. It's about 2.4 acres, just a little under 2.4 acres, and it was fully compliant with the zoning regulations for frontage, lot area, all things, all the bulk requirements. There are no wetlands on the site, no upland review area either. The upland review area is this solid line here, and we are, you know, we're somewhere in the order of magnitude of about 50 feet away from the upland review area for this parcel. No floodplains on the site, and all of the utilities are readily available in Raffia Road. There are two utilities that are stubbed onto the site in existing conditions. Water was extended into the site for the temporary construction trailers. They're actually shown on our existing conditions here. Those were the temporary office trailers for the renovations at the school. So water does extend at the completion of the construction, and when the office trailers were pulled out, the service was removed back to the water meter pit, but the service stub from the street into the site and the meter pit still remain. Sewer was also extended into the site. When the sewer main along Raffia Road was constructed, they put, the contractor installed stubs into the larger parcel across the frontage. There's actually three stubs across our, the larger frontage of Raffia Road into both the, our project site and what is now 161 Post Office Road. So I'll jump ahead to the proposed site plan. So we are proposing a plus or minus 10,700-square-foot single-story retail facility, slab-on-grade. We have the building located down here in kind of the south-central portion of the site. Again, Raffia Road is plan left. JFK Middle School is up towards the top of the plan sheet. The building is compliant with all the setbacks. We exceed all of the required setbacks quite a bit. The closest that we get is the side setback here. We have about 30 feet provided, 20 is required. So the building fits nicely on the site. As far as the setbacks to paved areas or landscape buffers, if you will, we exceed in the front and rear setbacks, and we match the side on the south, and we have just a little excess on the north towards the JFK Middle School. For proposed coverages, we have complied with that as well. The max building coverage is 35%. We're in the neighborhood of 11% for building coverage. And total impervious coverage, we're at about 33%, and the requirement's 66. For parking, and actually... For parking, and actually, I will pass out a letter here, and I believe I heard earlier you're okay with me passing it directly.
Yes, I am. Please.
So we had an ART meeting with town staff back, it was last year, I believe it was late October. And if I recall correctly, Ms. Whitten was there, but I believe Matt Davis was not. We did discuss, one of our, one of our comments was... Would you like a copy? Okay. One of our questions was in regards to the total parking count. The zoning regulations do stipulate that there should be one parking space for every 350 square feet of sales and customer areas within the building. For this facility here, we have approximately 8,500 square feet of customer and sales floor area, which would result in 57 parking spaces. Between the applicant and BL Companies, we've done it quite a number of these facilities, and the actual used number at its true peak is not exceeding 20, and that would be like the peak holiday shopping time. Average daily parking that's used is six to 10 spaces. So we requested from town staff if there is a possibility of reducing the required parking. Our preference here is to minimize the net impact to the site and the neighborhood as a whole. We don't want to put an extra paving. It has, it increases stormwater runoff that then has to be mitigated on-site, adds urban heat island effect, and removes from our green space and applicable buffer areas to the surrounding properties. Included in the letter is a list of similar facilities that have been recently constructed. And you can see there's the store location, the address, and the number of parking stalls that were constructed at those facilities, and they're all in a similar ballpark, somewhere in that 35 to 37 spaces. We are requesting to install 36 here. So all matching similar facilities that have recently been developed, but also still well in excess of the peak that's used even in the holiday shopping periods of 20. So, yes.
Not to interrupt you again, but just, I don't want to lose the thought. Would it be possible for you to upgrade, update this for those store locations and give us what the square foot of each one of those buildings is?
Yes.
And we don't have to have it tonight, maybe next meeting, if you can.
Yes. We can certainly provide that. I can say I have been involved in at least half of these, and they are all the 10,700-square-foot range, so very similar-sized facilities, but I can certainly get the exact numbers for you on that.
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So with that said, you know, we certainly feel, from an engineering standpoint, a reduction in parking is certainly justified from an environmental standpoint, minimizes our footprint. So we would request that you consider allowing a reduction here. With that said, all the parking that is provided is compliant with the zoning regulations. Stall sizes are all nine by 18, which matches the minimum requirements. Drive aisles are actually slightly oversized, but that is due to accommodating delivery vehicles. The expected delivery vehicle is a full WB67 tractor-trailer. So we do have slightly oversized driveways. We're 28 feet on the side, 36 feet on the front, and that's to accommodate the tractor-trailer coming in from Raffia Road, looping in, nosing in in front of the store, and then backing up and making the swing as they go. The deliveries are all expected to occur off-peak hours, so there's expected to be very minimal impact on the traffic or on the parking stalls. And with the expected daily average of six to 10 spaces used at any given time, including employees, it really shouldn't impact any of the parking at all. The vehicle swoops, the vehicle path swoops into the outer parking. It doesn't encroach on the inner. So there really isn't expected to be any impact on parking for truck traffic. As far as traffic demands for the site, we did prepare a full traffic study here, and that was included in the application package. Given the sensitivity of this specific site with a four-way stop intersection, a couple hundred feet to the south, I believe it is, and then with the school immediately next door, we did do the full study. Total traffic, the max in any given two-hour window is a midday on a Saturday, which is a total of 86 trips out, which is, it's an average of a little more than one and a quarter per minute. Pretty typical of this size facility. And our traffic engineering staff did review for any suggested improvements to this area, both onsite and offsite. No suggestions were, no recommendations came forward for improvements offsite. The only recommendations for onsite were to install a stop sign and a stop bar at the exit drive, which we have shown on the plans.
No, I hate to interrupt you again, but I don't, we didn't receive the traffic study.
It was in, and I don't know if you guys received it directly. It was in the application booklet, the site plan approval booklet, and I think it was Appendix C.
Did anybody else see the traffic study? We did not, we did not.
I think it may be in the virtual master packet, which is like several hundred pages.
All right, all right. Okay. So it is in the virtual master packet. Okay.
If we don't receive 14 hard copies, Mr. Chairman, we don't provide it.
I don't blame you.
And I don't think we receive 14 hard copies of the traffic study. Maybe we're wrong.
That's okay. So we can get it in the master packet.
Yeah. It is in the master packet. If you'd like, for the next meeting, we could just do the summary, which is what we usually do.
That would be great, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you.
I do have a copy here with me. If you would like me to leave it, I'd be fine with it.
We have it.
We have it. So we should have given you the summary. Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. No problem. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
And I would like to, just with traffic close, that we did discuss the traffic at the ART meeting with town staff, and you're both planning, engineering, fire, and police. None of them really had any specific concerns regarding traffic for this site. We feel it's a pretty straightforward site, and the peak for this type of store typically occurs off-peak from the abutting businesses, so it certainly seems to be a complementary use. Jumping to utilities. We are proposing to reuse the water service that is stubbed into the site. The meter pit is located under our proposed driveway, so we would like to reuse that existing connection and work with the water department on what the connection may look like. Do we have to swap out the meter pit or the meter? And then extend a new one-inch HDPE line from that meter pit into the building for domestic water. For sewer, we're proposing to reuse one of the existing stubs. It's located approximately two-thirds of the way down our frontage, and we have the sanitary coming into the side of the building here with a six-inch, excuse me, PVC line. Electric and telecommunications are connecting to a pole, which is on our side of the frontage. We have drops coming down to an underground conduit duct bank running to the backside of the building for connection. So all of the electric and telecommunications will be underground. And then for gas, the main is under the sidewalk on the near side of the street. So we're planning to connect to that and run up into the building to provide our energy source for heating. There is no proposed fire suppression system on this facility. And for stormwater, we have a surface stormwater basin located behind the facility. We have grassed drainage channels along both the north and south side of the site, and all of the stormwater runoff will flow from the parking lot through three curb cuts down into the grass channels. We have, one of the curb cuts is located down in the bottom-left corner here for the, like, primary customer parking area. We have one curb cut located right up at the driveway, and then we have the last curb cut located on the additional six parking stalls up here to the top center of the site. Once the runoff flows through those curb cuts and into the grass channels, we get our stormwater pretreatment via overland flow through the grass channel, filtering out any of the initial sediment and debris that may come into the parking lot areas. And then the remainder of the treatment will happen in the stormwater basin. Roof water is collected in gutters and downspouts along the back of the building, which is the bottom of the plan sheet here. It flows over some riprap splash pads down into the grass channel and then flows down into the basin. The basin itself, at the request of the assistant town engineer, was sized to accommodate the 100-year storm event, assuming no infiltration. So no water will overtop this basin in the event ground is frozen. All the water stays in. We did match the pre-development and post-development peak discharge rates for no infiltration. We have an outlet control structure, which is represented as a catch basin. There is a pipe from the floor of the basin into that structure. Then we have a weir wall inside the structure. So in the event that water builds up, it will backbuild in the pond and up in that structure, overtop the weir within the structure, and then flow out via a pipe out to the street system, which matches the primary discharge location for the site in existing conditions. With that said, we did also run stormwater calculations for infiltration conditions, which is primarily what is going to happen. And in the 100-year storm, the peak water elevation is somewhere in the ballpark of two feet deep in the pond. So it's, although it's oversized because we went with the no infiltration condition, there really isn't going to be much for water standing in there, even in extreme storm events. Additionally, we have site lighting scattered throughout the site, and I don't believe it's on this sheet. I will jump to the lighting plan quickly. We have three pole lights located on the site and several wall packs. So we have one pole light located in front of the front parking, and it is facing in towards the site, in towards the building. We have two pole lights located up towards the top of the site, again, pointing down in towards the site, facing in towards the building. And then we have wall packs scattered around the two sides of the building with parking along the frontage there. Expected light levels are all pretty minimal here. I think the peak that we got to was somewhere around seven, eight-foot candles for a peak light level directly under the light. The average in the parking area is approximately one for minimum, you know, levels for security. And then for spillage, it's very minimal. We're around .1-foot candles. The average spillage through the majority of the perimeter is approaching zero, or truly zero. We do have quite a substantial landscaping plan as well. And I would like to point out with this that we do have, through the zoning regulations, we do have some required buffer yards, and we do comply with those. The school property and the property across Raffia Road are residentially zoned. So we have the required front buffer located along the frontage with Raffia Road and the side buffer yard located along the abutting property line with the school. So with the front landscaping requirement, one tree per 50 linear feet of frontage, which is three trees required here, we have 12 provided, which is largely driven by the buffer requirements. The buffer requirements, 25 feet deep, which we have two canopy trees, six understory evergreens, and nine shrubs per 100 linear feet. We have 150 linear feet of frontage, and we essentially match the requirements. I think we have one extra shrub in there, but we match the canopy and understory trees. For the side landscaping, we qualify as a buffer yard C, which has four canopy trees required, nine understory or evergreens per 100 linear feet, and we substantially match that as well. 16 canopy trees, 33 evergreens, and three understory for our side lot line of 400 linear feet. For the parking lot landscaping, the interior landscape percentage of requirement 15% minimum were 24, 24 and 1/2%. So we exceed that. And parking lot trees, one per five spaces. We've got eight provided, which is 7.2 required. The tree sizing, we match or exceed all of the size requirements. Two and 1/2-inch caliper for canopy, one and 1/2-inch for understory, and six-foot height for evergreens. We match those requirements. As far as additional plantings, we have some low-growing perennials along the frontage of the building. It's got like a five-foot-wide sidewalk and then about a four-foot-wide planter between the sidewalk and the building. And there's stone under those plantings in the beds along the two sides of the building with parking adjacent to it. The green space around the site is primarily seeded with a lawn seed mix. In the basin, we have a seed mix specifically formulated for wet conditions, knowing that it's a stormwater basin. For signage, we do not have signage included in this application package. That will come later, but we do show the proposed monument sign location on the plans, located up by the driveway, on the south side of the driveway. So with that, I think I will pass it off to Sarah to go over the building.
Good evening. Can I just steal yours?
Yeah.
It takes a minute to...
Good evening. I'm Sarah Connolly with BKA Architects. Just straighten this out real quick. Okay. So this elevation here, elevation two, is along Raffia Road. The other elevation that I'm going to speak about right now is on the parking lot side here. These two elevations are flanked with a mansard roof, adding an opportunity to screen the rooftop units behind and adding an element of prominence to the entry, which is chamfered on an angle. We also have areas for future signage in a dark gray fiber cement siding, something similar to a hardy board or whatever is available in a dark gray. Then we also have the lighter gray fiber cement siding all along the most prominent elevations here. We have the windows, which are not transparent. There'll be a spandrel glass, so you cannot see through them, flanked with decorative shutters. From there, all along, three of the sides will have a brick roloch, which is a thinset brick. It's not a full brick. And then on the rear of the buildings will have the metal panel siding, probably vertical all the way through to the ground. The highest point here at the mansard is around 21 foot 6 inches, and at the lowest point with the mansard is around almost 20 feet, where it steps down to still provide a screen for those rooftop units.
Okay. Thank you.
At this point...
At this point, there's really nothing more for us to present to the commission. Those are the plans, and we look forward to hearing your comments, questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? I had a couple. And I'm looking at Matt, too. I think based on the amount of parking, don't some EV stalls have to be installed with this project? It says new construction, and they're asking for 36 parking spaces. Doesn't that require some of them to be EVs?
I think you're correct. I think the threshold in the statute mandated the state is 30 spaces. I'm pretty sure.
That's why I'm asking.
Do have to be EV. And we'll pick that up when we get the site planner review done, but the applicant can certainly take a look at it.
Yeah.
That state mandate as well.
That's why I asked the question. I thought, give you a heads up.
Thank you.
Since I'm sure you're going to, probably going to want us to, at least you're hoping that we make a decision on this the next meeting, I would highly recommend you go back and take a look at installing some EV stations.
I appreciate it, and frankly, I'm surprised we missed that. So, we did...
That's okay. Something new. The other question I have for you is, and I know this is way off in the left field, but I just need to ask, just because I know the property and know where it is, and I know how close you're going to be to our middle school, was any consideration given to fencing part of the property? I know that, I know that it's a financial burden, but I'm just thinking about, you know, making sure that the property, and you don't have to consider this, it's segregated from the middle school because you are close to the middle school.
Yes. And I just want to flip back to the survey. I know we looked at that, our, there is a section of chain link fence. I would have to double-check that. I'm pretty sure there is a fence installed on the school property.
Okay.
To provide that, that barrier. We do show it on the survey. Ballparking here looks like maybe 15 feet onto the school property. We show a segment here back behind the open space area, but then it does look like it extends just about to the street.
Yeah.
So, there is a barrier, but we also do have the extensive landscape buffer yard.
Yeah.
Certainly, as that grows in, that will provide an additional barrier.
Yeah. But if you just could double-check, and I'm not asking that you, you know, because you don't have to, but...
No, we will check that for you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, and I think just one more thing I just want to add, if I can, Ken? Only because I want to just get this out here so that everyone understands. And I'm not meaning everyone who's here understands, because I think we all understand, because I just want to read something again, so anyone who's listening understands, if that this use is permitted as of right. It is, in the BL zoning district, this was zoned, I don't know how many years ago now is a BL zone district. Rezoning of this property was not anything this particular planning zoning commission did. This was done before. So, you have by right the ability to create a new commercial area here. And I just want to get that for the record so that anyone out there watching this fully understands the situation.
We appreciate you putting that on the record. Thank you.
Commissioner Holinsky.
Yeah. How many deliveries a day would you anticipate? I'm sorry. How many deliveries a day would you anticipate as far as supplying the, uh, the facility itself?
Sure. So, deliveries, we're expecting up to somewhere around like half a dozen a week. It's on the order of magnitude of one, maybe two tractor trailers a week, and then smaller, smaller trucks for some of the smaller dry goods. This type of retail could have some, whether it's dry goods or food or similar items. So, if, you know, you're getting something like salty snacks or soda, those would certainly be more of like a box truck or a smaller truck, and then one or two of the larger trucks a week. So, it's, it's pretty minimal, maybe two a day at most, I would say, and some days there's none.
Did you mention they were off-peak hours or they would be...
Deliveries for the larger vehicles would certainly be emphasized for off-peak hours. Some of the, the smaller delivery vehicles might be a little bit more towards midday, but those are certainly less impactful, both on the traffic and the turning movements.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner LaMelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You had mentioned the water, the current water line and extending it for domestic usage. And you said you weren't proposing a fire suppression system. Did you get that through your administrative meetings, that one's not going to be required?
Uh, yes. We confirmed with the, uh, the state building code and with the, the fire department that a fire suppression system is not required here.
Okay. The other thing was you're asking for a reduction in amount of parking spaces. So, what kind of retail wouldn't generate more parking, the amount of parking spaces required? It just, like you even said, even during the holidays. It just...
So, it's really more based on the size of retail that this is, given that it's, uh, you know, what are we, 8,500 square feet for sales floor? That's a pretty limited space. It, it's a completely different type of business model than some of the larger facilities, like some of the box stores or like a Target or a Walmart. So, if you compare to whether it's an auto parts store or a dollar store or some similar retail uses like that, that's the order of magnitude we're talking. And they have, at any given time, a handful of customers at any moment, even though they have a larger sales floor. So, when you add in the handful of employees they have, that's what gets up to the six to 10 at any given time. So, that's where we feel there's that little bit of a disconnect between the parking calc and the floor area size. The way the regulations seem to be written, it lends more towards some of the larger, larger square foot stores, more like a Target, a Walmart, or some of the box stores or...
And what's going to be selling out of there?
Uh, dry good retails. I don't know if, have they locked in a tenant yet?
So, we don't know...
I'm not sure, but it's, it's going to be dry goods. We're not talking anything like, there's no cannabis, there's no, uh, no liquor, anything like that.
So, without even knowing what materials are going to be in there, they already, you already told you don't need a fire suppression system?
It's...
That seems a little odd.
Yes. So, it's, we're agreeing to the, there's a couple tenants that they have in mind for this. Based on those specific uses and goods that they sell, they're not expected to be a high hazard, which pulls us down into the, the lower risk category, which allows a larger square foot area of unprotected space.
If I may, you just reminded me, Sarah, that by the building code, under 12,000 square feet does not require a suppression system?
For this type of mercantile that they're going to be targeting...
Just so sure you say that in the...
Oops, sorry. For this type of mercantile that they're going to be targeting, it's less than 12,000 square feet, so we won't need to provide sprinklers.
Okay. I'm just seeing the fire department comments as no concern at this time. And the water, the water line is a domestic, like, one-inch line right now?
The service line coming off the street is actually a two-inch. We're proposing to reduce it in the meter, do a smaller meter, because with our experience, the average flow that we use is on the order of magnitude of like 50 gallons per day. So, two-inch is certainly oversized for what we need. So, we'll go with a smaller line from the meter.
Okay. I'm sure the fire department's going to get another bite at the apple here, so...
Yes, certainly, they'll have a chance to review the plans when the full building permit submission comes in as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner D'Antonio.
Yeah, I have a few comments and, and some questions. Trying to think about it from the kind of perspective of the street, right? It's surrounded by a residential area. So, I'm thinking about, you know, accessibility by, by all sorts of users. So, so one, one simple thing I would, I would say to consider, I don't see it mentioned in the plans, we can't require, it's not required by our regulation, but I would consider bicycle parking near the entrance. It is a relatively quiet area of town, which is actually right, right off, I mean, there, there's shared use paths and there's a multi-use path, bike path, right on, uh, Post Office Road, and then it becomes a, a shared use driveway on the other side of Post Office Road. So, it's certainly an area we should develop to be more encouraged, to be more pedestrian and bike-friendly. On that note, also, I don't see any, any access, any direct access from the sidewalk. That, that's something I would consider. I'm not sure if you, you guys have considered it before, a walking path from, from sidewalk to front door, which would probably include some striping, uh, you know, to, to provide the visual indicator across, internal crosswalk. And then as far as, I think those are, those are my, my comments. As far as questions, um, or maybe concern is, is the radius of the, the right turn exit is, seems abnormally wide. I'm, I'm hoping you could comment on that. And again, I'm trying to think of this from, from the, again, from the pedestrian traffic safety perspective. The wider the radius, the, the less, uh, you know, the faster drivers can, can exit, the less they pay attention to the sidewalk. Again, this is an area very close to a school, residential area. I think it's something we've got to really be careful about, so I'm hoping you can provide some details on that.
Sure. So, first, I'll start with regards to your first two comments on the, the accessibility for both bicycles and pedestrians. It's certainly something, you know, we'll look into a little more. We do have space between the, the sidewalk and the street to provide access. We would have to do a, some type of a break in that front buffer area to get that access in. So, if that's something that the commission is willing to accept, we can certainly provide that for both bicycles and pedestrians. We could...
Not to interrupt, because I looked through the plans, but I probably missed it because I'm not an engineer. So, I take it you did not tie into the sidewalk to the, from the building to the sidewalk?
Correct.
Okay.
But that's something we can add, so we can certainly circle back on that.
Yeah. Well, I, I hope you don't mind. I'm, I'm kind of going along with Commissioner D'Antonio. I think in this, this particular neighborhood, I think that would be an added benefit, if possible.
Yes. And I guess...
Thank you.
Along that line, I would like to add, too, that I know with the subdivision hearings that we had, it was a condition to install the, the five-foot sidewalk. That is added to the subdivision plan, but we also show it here on the site plan, so it's clear for the contractor regardless of whether it falls under subdivision or under the site work. We do have the new five-foot wide sidewalk, so, you know, that all ties in nicely. And we do have space to provide a walk connecting through into the, the heart of the site. And there is space, you know, along the frontage to put in bicycle parking, so we could certainly circle back on that. And as far as the radius, I'm going to flip to our, we do have a truck turning plan in our plan set, and I just have to, excuse me for a second while I flip to it, find it here. The radii in the driveway are largely driven by the turning movement of the delivery vehicles. We typically design these to minimize the impact of the delivery vehicle on traffic coming from the opposing direction. So, it's a little hard to see here with the, the color shading that we have, but we show the most challenging turning movement. That's what we designed for, which would be a right-in and a right-out. So, the right-in, uh, leads us to the, the larger radius on the end, which isn't as bad, but, you know, we certainly, we come pretty close over here and we, within a foot of the curb on this side, and we've got about a foot and a half over here. On the way out, as they pull out, the trucks do swoop a little bit towards the far lane, and they do cross into the, into the oncoming lane a little bit, but they come really close to the curb line over here. So, that's, that's really what necessitated the, the wider-than-average radius for the driveway.
Okay. Thanks. And if you don't mind, I, I think it's related to that. The, I'm guessing that, that almost kind of necessitates that extra row of parking that's closest to the building. So, so it necessitate, so, so I guess what I'm getting to is, is I noticed you like far exceeded the, the setback. So, it was part, it seems like a strong part of that motivation, again, sacrificing, you know, visibility from the street and access to pedestrians and easier access to the street. It seems that a big reason of that was to provide truck maneuverability. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, really, the turning movement coming in, the right-in and making that hard U-turn, that is a very challenging movement, which does pull the building back. That, that's certainly the biggest driver for the building being pulled back from the street a bit. Between that and providing the front buffer requirements, because across the street is residential, those kind of go hand in hand.
Gotcha. All right. Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate this, uh, this diagram. I don't think we've seen one of these, at least not, not recently. But that's good for understanding.
Commissioner Machado.
Yeah, I think your plan has been well-done, very well-developed. One question I have is, given the nature of the new JFK building, which was recently completed, how far are you from the entrance driveway that's next to the property line? Is it within reasonable distance?
Uh, it is fairly close. The, the closest driveway is actually shown on our survey plans. It's, it's right up here, ballpark of probably about, was that 50 feet away, I would say? That was an item that came up in our ART meeting with town staff, and they did emphasize that with the renovations to the school, that used to be, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, that used to be primary access point for just about everybody, the general public and staff. Now, as a result of the renovations, that's really staff-only. It's not the primary pickup and drop-off or bus circulation path. So, it really cuts down on the amount of, of traffic utilizing that, which minimizes the impact with our driveway being so close. We did consider flipping the site and having the primary driveway towards the bottom of the plan sheet, but that got pretty close to the stop sign. So, we, we're trying to balance the two, and for overall traffic safety reasons, we felt it was better to have the driveway towards the top, given the improvements to the school and the limitation of the traffic volume at that nearest driveway.
Yeah. I, I have seen that the new use of the existing driveway is much less intense than it used to be. All the school buses are at the far end, almost in the middle of the JFK frontage, so this is good. Last part is the new sidewalk that the school has built. I'm assuming your proposal matches basically the same?
Yes. We connect into that. That sidewalk extends just about to the property line. We're running our sidewalk just inside the town property, so there's a slight jog in the sidewalk, but we connect to the existing curb ramp where it crosses the street. But we will connect directly to it, so there's, it's an uninterrupted sidewalk all the way across the school and all the way across our frontage. And then we tie in at, at our southern property line, it matches up with the existing asphalt sidewalk, so it'll be a continuous path.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I would, I would suppose, just out of curiosity, moving it up towards the school, your entrance, takes it away from the four corners farther away, which I'm sure was a big consideration.
Yes.
You know, so that, you know, probably was really the only alternative you had there.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner LaMelo?
How far away did you say the driveway was? Your entrance from the school driveway?
50 feet.
It's, it's about 50, yeah.
Okay. And that was okay with staff?
Yes.
I'm just going to ask if, if staff has any comments they want to make here tonight, knowing that we are going to be table in this, but do you have anything you want to add? Matt or Lori?
I don't have anything.
Matt? Okay, Matt's all set. Um, oh, come on. Thank you.
The only comment I have is for the staff, is this parking reduction a waiver that we have to vote on separately?
No, you, um, this is pretty common with, with this commission. I mean, you have it in the regulations that, you know, the applicant can, can come up with the calculations and the reasoning for the, for the reduction, that, you know, you could accept that.
Okay. Just a dovetail off of that. I just have a... Just to dovetail off of that, I just have a, not knowing what's going there, I have a little bit of a problem with the, I don't mind voting to not have the parking, but it's hard to do it when you don't know what's there. I see the building, but, thank you.
So noted.
Yeah, the parking, if I have my, kind of tag team with you a little bit. I mean, I like, I love it when we get reductions of parking. Previous, you know, getting rid of it is wonderful. As far as, like, we have way too much concrete tar here in Anfield. With the same token, I think Commissioner Laimo brings up a good point. Not that we should even consider this, but reduction in the parking based on what you think your use is going to be is fine for us today. But 10 years from now, if that different commercial person or company is in there, that parking might be inadequate. But, so I'm, you know, I'm just sharing this with you. As a commissioner, I'm kind of perplexed because I like the idea of reducing it whenever we can. So I just, just wanted to get that for the record.
Exactly. For me as well. It's hard to agree to it. I understand the same. Less tar is better, less drainage, less runoff. But not knowing what's going there is a little difficult.
We will see if we can give you some additional information that would make you more comfortable. But I would like to point out, Mr. Chairman's comment was a little bit different, which is, well, what about a user down the road?
Yeah.
And the only thing I might mention is that no one is going to run a business unless there is sufficient parking for their own clients.
Yep.
And there is certainly space on this site, and we've checked, we can put in the required parking. And if someone was running an operation other than our intended tenant in that place and needed more parking, the space is there to do so, in which case they'd come back to you for a site plan update or change.
Valid point. Good point. Thank you. Valid point. Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion. We table this. Site plan review to the next meeting. And seeing there's no other discussion, entertain a motion to table.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Holinsky, seconded by Commissioner Machado, since I'm looking at him. All those in favor of tabling this item to the next meeting, signify by saying aye. Thank you. We will see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Now we're going to get on to this poor gentleman who's been sitting here all night.
Okay, we're going to go on to SPR 1921 for Niblick Road, applicant for Bottle Redemption Center, Mihar Patel, applicant Peerless Rentals LLC, owner, map 55, lot 91, IP zone.
And if I may just do one administrative thing before we get started, I will entertain a motion so that we can exceed our meeting past the 11 o'clock timeframe, not to exceed midnight. A motion made by Commissioner Machado, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Let the record show, we extended our meeting to midnight. Thank you. Please feel seated. And I think you probably heard the routine to identify yourself for the record, please.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mihar Patel. I'm applicant for Four Niblick Road, for Bottle Redemption Center.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you?
Good evening, Chair. This is RJR Russo and Associates, here representing the applicant. And this is an application for a site plan modification for Niblick Road, currently a vacant commercial building in your industrial park. Mr. Patel has entered into an agreement with the building owner to bring a bottle redemption center to about 10,000 square feet of that building, which I've highlighted in green. It's the part the furthest away or the back of the building, if you take a look at the site plan there. And other than that, there's really no construction here. It is a change of use. If you read the memo from my partner Dana Steele to Matt Davis, which is in your packets, I'm sure you've probably all gone through it, there's some explanation in there on how this, I think, fits into your, and it's also in Matt's memo, I think, and Matt Davis's memo, how this fits into your regulation. And there's also a description of the use and how it's going to operate, which is also in that memo to Matt Davis from Dana Steele. So as I said, it's an existing site, existing building. What will be done is some painting of the line striping. It's been out of service for a long time. It's very faint striped. It's hard to read. And they will be repainting and signing the handicap space, which is there. So that will be available to folks coming to the facility. But that's really the only exterior work that's going to happen. If you read through the memo, you'll see that trash dumpster is going to be located inside the building, no dumpster pad outside. It will be rolled out for pickup. The only other thing, and you may have this in your packets, we've got a recent letter from North Central Health Department. And there's just four quick items on there. Dumpster is one of them. We talked about that. Inside the building, public water, public sewer, the building's already tied in, that already exists. Redeemed bottles and cans should be routinely removed from the facility, as they are attracted to vermin and insect. That is part of the plan. And again, if you read the narrative, it talks about that. And the health department's recommending that they hire a pest control firm to put together a plan for them, for the facility. And Mr. Patel has agreed that he will do that and finds that it would probably be necessary, as it is for many types of facilities where they're handling these types of products. So this is fairly straightforward, I think. I know we've extended to 11, but I'd rather go home sooner versus 11 o'clock. Appreciate the extension, but I don't have a whole lot more to add, so if there's any questions.
We have other things after you're done, unfortunately. Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Higley?
Just a quick one. Is this open to the public?
Yes, it's going to be open to the public.
So if I may, I take it you're not to discuss anything related to the application, just for our own interest in, since we're on TV. Are you going to be part of the new state grant program for expanding the bottle redemption because of the deposit now on NIPS and things? I know there's a state program for startup companies to do that.
Well, we don't have any plan right now. That's just the initial steps we are doing. Once we get approval, after that, if we have any opportunity to work with the state or any plans, then we will involve with that. But at current point, we just want to do a business. And it's a pretty straightforward. So we just collect it and we just pass it back.
Thank you. And I drove out there, and I actually, I thought, when I first looked at the plans, I said, oh, this is, so this is, I thought it was the front, the front part of the building. So this is the rear part of the building?
Yes, we put it in the back, yes.
And the other question I have for staff is, I'm sure you're going to do this, but just for my own, can we make a condition, making sure that, I'm sure you're going to, so I'm not implying you're not, that a pest company does come on a regular basis? Can that be a condition?
It's a site plan application. It's not required in your regs. If the applicant is amenable, and apparently I heard that he was, then I don't think that he would object to the condition. It's kind of a friendly condition.
So I guess I'm just asking that. Would you be agreeable?
Yes, we would definitely do it.
Okay. So I would like to make, I would like to make a motion. Give me, somebody else ask a question so I can think of this motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Laimo.
Thank you. So you are open to the public?
Yes.
And it's talking about the trash being picked up? What, why are you generating so much trash?
It's just the concern with the health department. It's not much trash that's going to be generated. So it basically is a, it's not that much that we anticipated right now for trash issue. Because people bring, everything is a sorted product. There's no loose product going to be there. And this is our initial stage. So we just have to do manual pickup. But if the business pick up, and then eventually if you have to involve more, then we have to invest in high-tech machines. They just do a sorting.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you. Is there going to be any mechanical, because I've been to one of these facilities in South Windsor before. It's amazing how many people.
That's a step, yeah. That's a step two, as, we just get in, and then that's a step two we can, this place is a big, so it's pretty easy. We can accommodate some machines inside.
So you'll be able to give people money in return there? People will bring bottles?
Yes, we ask them to get the separate products. I mean, like, water bottles are separate, beers are separate, everything is separated. So to save their time, they just come in, they just drop it, and quickly they get their money.
Right.
Right of it.
So the place that I'm speaking of has a machine that separates everything, and flies into a hopper, and it spits out a receipt?
That's a step, that's a main step to.
You're not doing that now. You're waiting.
At this stage, because we're just starting up. And within like a little time, we have to start.
So do you need, do they need to come back to us again? Or is that going to be Building Department? Or?
No.
When you change the, it's like automatic, automated machines with chutes and.
I suppose if there's mechanicals that might need a building permit, but, I mean, I don't think they'll need to come back here.
Good. So, yeah. So if you get to that level, I think the community will love it. I think people like that kind of thing. Nobody wants to stand in line at the supermarkets.
That's the main concept. It's win-win for everyone. It's quicker.
I can, cock my wife, she doesn't like doing it. She could just go there and drop these things off.
And now, since they changed all this other product, like juices and stuff.
Right. Now Gatorade has to be returned.
So it's way too bigger. And, I mean, the grocery store already has, like, I see the Costco limit their thing. So with us, there is no limit. Anybody can, anything in the state of Connecticut, they can come us, come to us. And we have vendors, they're going to pick it up.
Yep.
Like a Coca-Cola or a beer distributor. They bring their trucks, and they just take their stuff. Because they're obligated with that.
Yeah, good. And I'm glad the city industrial park getting used.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Staff, Matt or Lori, do you have anything you want to add with this particular application? So I'd like to make a motion, oh, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Were you going to say something?
No, I said I don't.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to add, under site specific, site specific, I'm getting tired, site-specific conditions, 12A, rather do it that way than reword and renumber them all, is that the applicant acquires the services of a pest control company for routine pest management of the facility. Simple as that.
Second.
The second, motion made by, not supposed to do this, but a motion made by the chairman, seconded by the vice chair, Commissioner Higley, to add site condition 12A, applicant shall acquire the services of a pest control company for routine pest management of the facility. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, and I want to thank the applicant for agreeing to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing that there's no other questions, we're not quite done yet. So.
It's not 11 o'clock yet.
It's not 11 o'clock. The secretary make a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve SPR 1921, application for site plan approval to allow a 10,000 square foot, plus or minus bottle rep, yeah, I can't say the word now. Redemption Center at Four Niblick Road. Mihar Patel, applicant Peerless Rentals LLC, owner, JR Russo agent, map 55, lot 91, IP zone, per the reference plans report and application material listed herein. And with the following 24 conditions in site-specific condition 12A, the applicant would hire a pest control company for routine pest management of the facility.
Thank you. Motion made by the secretary. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call whenever you're ready. It's okay. Take your time.
Lou Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Karim Machmadar.
Four.
Ken Holinsky.
Four.
Four.
The record shows unanimous approval of your application. Good luck with your new business, and welcome to Anfield.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys, for staying around so late. Sorry you were last.
Thank you.
Or just about last.
For sure, yeah.
Next to last. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Now, the next step is, we have to apply for the building, for the, like, inside, like, little office, little small improvements inside. It's pretty simple. And we was waiting for first step, this step. And after that, we all said, yeah. The state told me, once the town approved it, I can just apply. I have to apply for a DEP, but they said they need town's approval first. So now I can call them to put application.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, we're going to move on to SPR 1917.
1917, 40 Oliver Road, applicant for special event, Renee Sheriff, applicant Claire M. Sheriff, Sarah Harlos, Renee Sheriff, Tamra Sheriff, and Nathan Sheriff, owner, map 47, lot 37, I-1 zone.
Thank you. Seeing that the applicant is not here, I'm just going to take a quick second to read staff's comments. I'll save you the chance there, Matt, I'll read them, if you don't mind. Basically, we can go on on this, but I'm going to keep it, two sentences is for the record. In light of staff's conversation with the P&amp;Z as to the applicant's processing, the substantive deficiencies in the application as submitted, staff's multiple attempts to acquire necessary information, and the office current staffing challenges, staff has recommended denial of this application. The deficiencies include the following: lack of written consents from all the property owners or a notarized power of attorney, the site plan is substantially incomplete, the project scope is unclear, and the description is insufficient, a butter zoning is incorrect, and fail to satisfy the requirements of 890s. So I would entertain a motion to deny this application. Yes.
Didn't she read it, and then we did not, we voted against it?
Yes, yep. I'm just, yep, absolutely. Just making my suggestion.
Oh, okay. Hold on, hold on. I got a, I don't think there is a written.
Is there a description?
There was no real description. Are we going to have a party? Okay.
You could just read it from the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to approve SPR 1917, 40 Oliver Road. I'm getting tired. Application for a special event, Renee Sheriff, applicant Claire M. Sheriff, Sarah Harlos, Renee Sheriff, Tamra Sheriff, and Nathan Sheriff, owners, map 47, lot 37, I-1 zone.
Thank you. This is a motion made by Vice Chairman DeGray, seconded by Vice Chairman Higley. Any discussion on a motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Lou Fiore.
Deny.
Linda DeGray, denied. Virginia Higley.
Against.
Frank Alamo.
Denied.
Karim Machmadar.
Denied.
Ken Holinsky.
Denied.
Nick Wefakis.
Against.
Thank you. Let the record shows unanimous, seven nothing. Deny for the five reasons that were already prior. I don't have to read them again, I don't think, Lori and Matt, right? For the five reasons that I already mentioned. So that is denied.
Strange.
Yeah, it was. Moving on, and, yeah, moving on to other business. Is there any other business? Enforcement reports. Correspondence. Commissioners' correspondence.
I have something.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Laimo.
I'm going to get back on, thank you, I'm going to get back on the mall. We mentioned bandwagon, soapbox. Those lights they promised us a couple of months ago still aren't in, those solar lights.
We're working on it, that amongst other things.
Yeah, and the other thing was, I'm wondering if you guys were having some stress in your department with budget cuts or whatever. Has Building Department been reduced as well? Because.
No.
No. Building Department is fully staffed?
As far as I know, yes.
Because I just, I see now a fence went up on one of our most recent approvals that moved chicken place. But on the mall property, the cannabis place that we approved, I don't see anything going on there. And I think the fire department's running there a lot for a fire alarm sounding, and it's being, I think it's a little annoying.
My understanding is that they've just gotten OSSA approval, and they are moving forward.
Oh, okay. Good.
The other one is.
Yeah, I didn't know if they were like, you know, lacking help like you were, and things are just behind.
I mean, I mean, we do need assistance.
Yeah, I know, you were explaining the budget cuts.
You know, yes, there's budget cuts, but mostly the secretary left, and we have no replacement yet. So.
So the cannabis place should be underway soon, and.
As far as I know.
And the mall is, I'm upset really about the whole thing. But anyway.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
Director of Planning Report.
I guess that's me. All right, I'm just going to go through the. All right, I'm just going to go through the receipt of applications first, and some of them we've actually heard this evening, so as they, they were just received on the same night. Public hearing 3072, 117 North Street, application for home occupation, truck parking and earth material storage, Joseph LaCory, applicant owner, MAP 93, lot 15, I-1 zone. Public hearing 3073, 329 Hazard Avenue, application to convert single-family home to a two-family home, Our Town Home Buyers LLC, applicant owner, MAP 83, lot 256, HVBL zone. That will be heard in September. SPR 1921, 4 Niblick, application for the Bottle Redemption Center, Meher Patel, applicant Peerless Rentals LLC, owner, MAP 55, lot 91, IP zone, and that's what we just approved, well, you just approved, I didn't do anything. PH 3074, Laughlin Road, application for a three-lot frontage subdivision, Carl and Loretta Nelson, owner, applicant, MAP, and I don't know that, I don't know what the map and lot were, R-88 zone, and that also will be heard in September. XMA 23-01, 5 Taylor Road, this is the Nathan Hale School rezone, application of town of Enfield, to rezone this from R-33 to BL, and at this point, that's probably going to be heard in September as well, because I think our next agenda is pretty packed, or getting there. And XSU, 3075, 800 Enfield Street, town of Enfield, applicant and owner, and this is for the Higgins Park parking lot, lighting and exercise stations along the pathway. And that, that's going for an 824 on Monday. And then one more, oh, already got that one. So that's it for receipt of applications.
So as you can see, we're trying to wrap things up, it's unfortunate we couldn't take a couple of things, they're still on the table, we weren't able to finish them tonight, but, so we'll have a full agenda in July, the plan still is to have no meetings in August, I think most of the applicants have gotten that, even town.
I was going to ask.
Even town upstairs, I think town manager and staff have understood.
I was going to ask the question about the school, do we need to move that into a special meeting to get that done, is that some, something urgent there?
No, I think, I think, I think the staff is September, I think, if it's not ready for the next meeting, the staff.
If we had, if we have room on the agenda, they'd like us to put it forward, but I don't think that that's going to happen. So there is another application that might be submitted tomorrow for the Grays Club, and also there's a possibility of an application for American Legion parking lot. So we'll just see if that happens or not.
So we will have a busy September, because we're backlogging stuff.
Can I ask a question, logistical question?
Yeah, if it's appropriate, yeah, please.
Um, we lost YouTube before, when it went down for a while, I just, it came to mind of looking at the agenda, and I think even in the paper and everywhere, we say, watch the, watch the meeting on YouTube. If we were to lose it and it didn't come back all night, would we have to stop the meeting?
No, because he's still taping.
Oh, okay.
And he's still taping, he would have to load it manually to YouTube when it came back up, so people could watch it tomorrow.
Just, I know, he said when I met him in the hallway, he said, the whole system's down, so we can keep going.
But he was still taping, and the problem we would have is if he lost his taping ability in-house here.
Right.
That's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
We're still recording it here.
Oh, okay.
This tiny little thing.
No, just curious, because I'd never, I didn't know how that would work.
So as long as he's still taping, they might not be able to watch it real time, or if someone come home and now wants to open a beer and watch it, they might not be able to.
I'm sure people are watching us all night long, drinking beer and loving it.
But whatever.
They got popcorn and everything.
Oh, yeah.
All right, opportunities and unresolved issues.
I just, I did want to give a quick report on the zoning regulations, so Lou and Matt and I had met together and looked at Don Poland, our consultant's recommendations for moving forward, we haven't had a chance to get back with Donald, or Don, and, but we're kind of thinking of some of the low-hanging fruit, knowing that September and this fall's going to be pretty busy, probably looking at legal issues, parking, any non-conforming statuses, so making these changes, so the application, or the regulations would become a little bit more complete. Don had already come up with a low-impact development regulation, so these are things that we could all look at relatively quickly, so we could kind of like, fill the regulations up with things that are already like, easy to fix out, so just wanted.
Because they were going to require public hearings, please be prepared, even though they're low-hanging fruit, and some of those things are going to be easy, you know, supposedly easy, nothing's easy, but, you know, trying to say here, there will be some special meetings in September and October in order to do that, and there's just no way around it, so I just want to make everybody prepare.
Do we do these individually, or do we have to wait until the whole document's done?
No, that's what we're trying not to do.
Okay.
That's the other approach, would be to wait and do the whole document, but that means we don't do anything until January.
Okay.
And what we're trying to do is get rid of some of the ones that we really have to do, because they're not compliant.
So we can do them piecemeal?
We can do, that's what we're trying to piece out, to be quite frank with you guys.
And can we do, like, multiple pieces at once?
Maybe, and we're trying not to do that either, we're trying to stay away from the ones that requires multiple pieces on top of it.
Because it took us months, months, to just to do Thompsonville.
Right.
And that just went into effect in 2021.
Right.
Well, I think it's a good way to go, because there's not going to be, you know, a hard sell here to do the non-conformings right away, and I think we're kind of tired of dealing with those.
And the things that, where the state, or federal government, or the state, or the state Supreme Court has, you know, made decisions on our regulations, you know, those things we have to do. But you're right, we're trying to be honest with you, Chris, we're trying to kind of stay away from the ones where it's going to do two or three sections, even though we'd like to do it, it's just, we don't have the time, guys, and staff doesn't have the time.
We could do like, multiple public hearings, like, back-to-back.
Yeah.
Cover different topics.
We can, so we're going to map all up, but I think, I wanted you guys to get, we wanted to get a feel for what we're trying to do here.
Can we schedule one public hearing for two regulations, like, two separate parts of the code, like, residential A, residential B, in the same night?
Of course, for every text amendment, it will be a public hearing, and.
But can we have three?
We could send the mall to CROG and just have one public hearing.
Because that would really save, if we have to do a public hearing individually for each one of these things.
We can batch them up.
We'll be here for a year.
Yeah, we can batch them up.
Okay.
So you see what we're trying.
As long as it's noticed properly.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, my question, the way I understand, sir, it would be more than a single phase of going through the entire regulation.
Yeah.
For initial phase, is there going to be sort of interaction with the board, the commission, on a, he has finished 30%, or he is?
Yes, of course, yes.
What I'd like to see is basically some kind of a exchange of ideas of what he's doing, how it's going to be perceived, rather than all at once, and now, take it or leave it type.
That's one reason.
No, take it or leave it.
That's, that's one reason why we're doing it a little bit piecemeal like this, but we will certainly have some sort of meeting with the consultant, and, and he's done a lot of work while we were working on the POCD, like, the low-impact development regulations, it's one of those cut-and-paste jobs, because, you know, every town is getting them now, so, you know, it's, so I think he's already added them in, just things like that, so, you know, we're, we're working on how we're going to proceed, but I just wanted to let you know that we are working on it.
And it is not going to be take it or leave it.
And we're going to have workshops where we can actually have Don in the room with us.
Probably not.
No.
Well.
Maybe.
That's unfair, I'm going to say that right now, because.
Possibly, I, I, I'm not going to say yes or no, because I think it really depends on what, what the topic is.
Because having done the Thompsonville one, just, like I said, we, we spent months, and we had the consultant in the room with us, and it was a back-and-forth, and it was very easy, easier flow than, and, no offense, Matt, but, you know, there's a lag time between you and us, so it just worked much easier, so I, I think not having Don in the room with us, to hear all of the ideas, and then have the back-and-forth, is kind of unfair to us as commissioners, and to the town.
But we're not doing that, we're not doing that much detail, that's our point, that you look for is January, we're not doing anything of that detail between now and January that's going to require us to really dive in.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying that I feel personally, him being in the room is more beneficial for a back-and-forth, and I know you, you want to do the low-hanging fruit, I get that, I understand that, but I think every commissioner should have this face-to-face interaction, and not an online thing, and I know the online thing is like the be-all, end-all for everybody, because then they don't have to leave their house, and we have to, but I really get frustrated with that.
I think that he will be here when it's really going to be important for him to be here, and we will do our best to make sure that he is here in-house, as opposed to online.
Okay, any other opportunities or unresolved issues?
Question on the process, again, after we approve it, does it have to go to council for a council approval?
No.
Okay.
It goes to CROG.
No, I just wanted to know if there's another step.
It goes to CROG beforehand.
Yeah.
Right, but council is not a part of the process.
No, no, the town council is not part of this process.
Nope, maybe in West Hartford, because they're the planning.
Yeah?
Yeah, they are. All right, any opportunities or unresolved issues? Any administrative approval requests? None?
No.